I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of December 3rd, 2019. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Mox.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
And Mayor Patino.
Here. The first item on our agenda is a presentation. Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Just, I'll just quickly introduce this item and hand it over to our Chief Information Officer, Jeff Morisick, and the police and fire staff. So we bring this item to the City Council for two reasons. It's a presentation, but it's a culmination of a number of projects that we've undertaken over the past few years to upgrade our public safety communication system. And it's been a great project that's now operational, and it's a real impact, positive impact for the public safety in the community, and, but it's also a behind-the-scenes project that isn't obvious for folks. So we wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the completion of the project, explain what it does, and then have our operational folks in police and fire be able to talk about how it is better able, better allows them to be able to provide public safety services. But we could start off with Jeff talking about the IT side of it and the production of the project.
Thank you.
Mayor Patino and members of the council, my name is Jeff Morisick.
And I'm the Chief Information Officer for the city, and I have been so since May of this year, so I'm relatively new to the city. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present information about this successful completion of a very important public safety technology modernization project. As City Manager Stillwell mentioned, the Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management System project is the most recent of a series of projects that have been completed over the last four to five years. This system ties together many of the investments you and the city staff have made to greatly improve the technology used by our public safety departments. These projects include the new police department and data center on Betarravia, the radio system and tower at Los Flores Ranch, the 911 emergency call system, and the Geospatial Information System, or GIS, to name just a few. For, for those that may be unfamiliar with what Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management System is, I offer this high-level explanation. It's a collection of technology applications that delivers realtime information to those who need it to make better decisions and for greater outcomes. These applications help our public safety agencies better inform first responders in realtime, improve response times, allocate resources more effectively, increase situational awareness, and provide for better data collection and analysis. This project was a massive effort that required tens of thousands of hours by dozens of people, including city staff, Motorola, who is our system vendor, and Nutel Consulting, who is our radio consultants, and others were involved in this project. The contract was signed almost three years ago, on December 5th, 2016, and the go-live date for the project was November 5th of this year. So it was almost a three-year-long project. You can read through the "By Numbers" section to get an idea of what went into this project. Now, since I'm a technology guy, I tend to focus on the technical aspects of the project, but I want to also emphasize that the operational components of configuration and provisioning the system, beyond just installing the hardware and the software, was every bit as detailed and challenging as plugging things in to make it work. The top picture on this slide shows our staging area for configuring our mobile data computers, or MDCs. In all, the team configured and installed 72 MDCs. That section on the top there is where they all get plugged into a central controller, and software is being downloaded and implemented on them now. So altogether, we had 72 MDCs as part of the project. The middle picture on the left is, shows an officer using the equipment in a police car, and the middle picture on the right shows a similar configuration in a fire truck. Now, those two pictures show kind of a clean presentation of the mobile data computers, as well as the mobile radios and other components in the vehicles. The picture on the bottom left shows what it looks like in the trunk of the vehicles. It looks like a mass of cables and wires, kind of looks like a ball of confusion, but rest assured, our technicians know where every one of those wires go and what every one of those components do. Altogether, it took, it takes approximately 15 man-hours to configure and install a new MDC in a vehicle. So it takes quite a bit of effort. The picture on the bottom right is a picture of the data center down at the police station, and that's the area where we have the servers, the switches, and the other components that actually run the CAD RMS system. So you can see that it's a fairly large footprint in our data center. There are many participants throughout the course of this project. The slide shows the city staff, consultants, and contractors that comprise the core team. Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz led the police team, and Battalion Chief Tom Craigs led the, led the team from the fire department. The people and names that appear here are the primary leads for their respective specialties, and were supported by many others to perform the intricate tasks of system configuration. Of course, Motorola, who's our vendor, supplied an army of consulting resources to help guide us in implementing this new technology. The picture there on the left, at the bottom left, shows a training session leading up to our go-live date on November 5th. One of the more important aspects of moving to new technology is ensuring that all staff is trained on it and is comfortable using it before the go-live date, because at go-live, the way everybody does their job is different than it was the day before. So they had to be all comfortable with how the system worked and how to use it. In all, there were dozens of training sessions conducted over the course of three months, and about 235 staff were trained in preparation, in preparation for go-live. The picture on the right was taken about 3:00 in the morning on November 5th. We had just flipped the switch, so to speak, and the project team was waiting for the first signs of life. It felt a little like the scene from the movie Apollo 13, where Mission Control was waiting to re-establish radio contact with the astronauts after re-entry into the Earth's atmosphere. Luckily for us, as in the movie, we were able to successfully establish communication with our vehicle shortly after we flipped the switch, and the system was live as the first call came into the dispatch center. So it was a very successful cut-over. This slide shows what the dispatch center looks like today. The top two pictures and the one on the bottom left show different views of the dispatch center and the equipment that the dispatchers use. Note that in the top two pictures, dispatchers are somehow able to manage information on eight separate monitors, as well as handle radio traffic and telephone calls through speakers and headsets. Every time I see them do that, I'm constantly amazed at how, how they do that, and it's an amazing thing to see them in action. The bottom picture on the right is a screenshot of one of the dispatch monitors. It shows a new feature of the CAD system that ties the city's GIS system into the dispatch center. Notice the icons that look like arrows. Those are realtime positions of police and fire vehicles within the city. The GIS feature enables dispatchers to select units that are closest to an emerging situation and significantly reduce response time and get help to those who need it faster than ever before. In addition, if someone leaves his or her vehicle, he or she can be tracked using a handheld radio. The handheld radios are equipped with a GPS transponder that is integrated with the CAD system. This is critical, for example, if police officers are on, are in foot pursuit or a firefighter enters a burning building. The, the GIS features also allow, also enable the dispatchers to download turn-by-turn instructions to wherever the incident might be, so it's easier to find where the emergency vehicles need to go. On the previous slide, you may have noticed a number of large-screen monitors on the walls of the dispatch center. These status monitors provide realtime information to dispatchers and supervisors to aid in incident response. The two monitors on the top left display the current status of police and fire calls. A third monitor shown on the bottom right displays the numbers and types of incidents and the average response times by incident type. As we collect more data, dispatch supervisors and leadership can use this information to make adjustments to policies and procedures to, to improve response times and overall effectiveness of the departments. As you can imagine, fast and reliable communication is the key to an effective dispatch center. The system utilizes an intricate web of communication technologies to form a seamless, integrated system. A high-level overview of how communication flows through the system is presented here. The center block shows the various pieces of equipment in the vehicles and, and those devices that are carried by police and fire personnel. They include mobile radios, handheld radios, MDCs, and a device which connects the MDCs to wireless and cellular networks throughout the city. All of these devices use the radio and wireless communications infrastructure to communicate with the dispatch center. The city-owned towers at Prell Road, Coke Street, Los Flores, combined with the water tower in Guadalupe, and other cellular towers used for cellphone communication, enable police and fire vehicles to stay connected with the dispatch center through the tower located at the police department. Two-way signals from the vehicles and dispatch center, whether they're radio signals, cellphone signals, or wireless data signals, traverse this infrastructure to ensure that messages and information are received reliably and timely. The tower at the police department is the hub of communications and receives signals from the vehicles directly and by way of the other towers, depending upon which tower is closest to the vehicle. Once data are received at the police department tower, they're sent through the data center infrastructure on the right, and then onto the dispatch center workstations. When dispatchers send information to responders, the flow is reversed. So it goes up through the data center, through the Betarravia Tower, and out, broadcasted over the airwaves to the various other towers, and then finally to the vehicles. This slide underscores the importance and value of the investments in this infrastructure that the city has made in recent years, and the CAD RMS project pulls all of these components together and provides a safer and more secure city for residents and visitors. So what's next? So now that we have this part of the project done, we have a few things that we'll be looking at in the, in the near future. We want to continue to refine the system features. As our staff becomes more acquainted with how it works and the data that's available, we'll be able to further customize it and make it more efficient to help improve response time and effectiveness of our departments. We intend to build additional performance and analytical reports to help, to help inform policies and procedures. We have another project underway right now. It's called the Fire Station Alerting System. This project is scheduled to be completed sometime this month and will be integrated into the CAD and RMS system. The Fire Station Alerting System will automatically accept signals from the dispatch center that will announce where an incident might be to all of our fire stations across the city over the speakers and alerting lights and those kinds of things, so that a response to incidents can be made much more quickly. In addition, we'll be evaluating an e-citation module, which would be an add-on to the CAD, to the MDCs, that will allow officers to directly input citation data that would cut down on data entry errors and certainly improve the efficiency of our police staff. And finally, we're going to look at our mutual aid radio capabilities so that we can communicate effectively with surrounding areas, more, more effectively than we have. One of the results of being on the leading edge of some of this technology is some of our partners are not, and so we have to figure out a way to maintain our mutual aid capabilities. So with that, I'd like to invite Chief Champion, Commander Snyder, and Sergeant Ruiz to talk about some of the operational benefits of the system. Chief, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Mayor Patino and City Council, for allowing me to express to you how this system has benefited the fire department. From all city staff, we appreciate your support in this very important project. I would also like to introduce Jim Clayton. He's in the back there. Captain Clayton was critical in provisioning all of the fire department response profiles into the system and spent countless hours doing that, so appreciate all of his work. Just wanted to go over a couple of highlights. The system for us includes the Computer Aided Dispatch System, the Mobile Data Computers, and the Location Fire Station Alerting System. Those three things are going to allow us to respond quicker to incidents. It has an auto-launch feature that will get our units out of the station quicker. We also will be able to send the closest unit using GPS, so that if a unit is out of their station and driving near an incident, they'll actually be able to see that engine and respond it to that call because it's closer to the emergency. We also receive critical information on that mobile data computer that will give us critical information like gate codes, historical incident data on that address, if there's anything that was there in the prior past that is important for us to know, premise hazards, if there's chemicals that are stored on-site that we need to know about. That information will get to our first responders rolling into the incident. The map will also display other fire apparatuses as we're traveling throughout the city. We can see other units responding to the same incident and also prevent possible accidents or collisions. And we're very encouraged that this is an intuitive and expandable system for the future. I would like to share one short story about when the system went, went live. The very next day, we had a unit get dispatched for a medical call, and as the captain went into the unit, pulled up the MDC information and saw that the dispatcher had put in their information about a subject with a gun. And so with that information, they were able to adjust the response and approach it from a more safe manner. And so the very next day, we were able to experience the benefits of the program, which has been tremendous so far. So with that, I will hand this off to Commander Snyder.
Good evening, and I too would like to thank the council and the mayor for the benefits of having the foresight to promote this project, and it's been several years in, in its, in the works, and it's, the benefits that have been described by Jeff and Chief Champion are the same with the police department. What he, what Jeff mentioned about the GPS capabilities, that's significant for the police department, having the ability to monitor the location of police officers throughout the city, their vehicles, but also once they exit those vehicles, if they were to get engaged in a foot pursuit and they weren't able to talk on their radio, for officers to know where that officer is located, and getting them help is essential. And also, in the dispatch center, for them to have that situational awareness, so when a 911 call comes in, for them to be able to look at the monitors and see a police officer that's maybe two blocks away from this incident and immediately direct them, and then on the, at the same time, tell the caller that there's an officer just blocks away is reassuring. Right now, prior to this new system, we didn't really have that capability unless the officer was telling the dispatcher directly where they were. Oftentimes, people are on the other line in a real tense situation, wondering how long it's going to be for help to arrive. So those are two significant features of the GPS. Call status monitors, they're essentially TVs like you have here in the council chambers, and we have them throughout the department, in our communication center, our patrol briefing room, our detective bureau, and it has calls that are pending, and if any personnel is interested, they can actually dig down deeper into those calls and get details. So for instance, if the detective bureau had a case that they were working and officers were at a call at that time, they could actually look and see what the officers are doing, see the names of the subjects that they're out with, and maybe gather some more intel for an investigation, or provide some officer safety information to those officers on scene. And with the mobile data, data computers, the significant improvement on that is that officers are now able to do their reports off of their MDCs in their patrol vehicle. Prior to that, they would have to typically come into the police station, log into a, a desktop, and complete their report. So it's allowing officers to stay in the field and be able to respond from the center of town, as opposed to maybe coming from the Betarravia headquarters. And the other big improvement is how those reports are processed. So they're going to be sent essentially via the web to their supervisors for approval. Once the reports are approved, they automatically go into the record system, and if there's any detective bureau follow-up, our mapping solution will then notify the detective bureau that there is a report, and they have realtime information. Now the detectives can get that information immediately. Prior to that, there were hard copies of reports, and they would go to the records bureau, get hand-checked and delivered, and oftentimes, several days or a week could go by before some of that information was disseminated in the police department. So those are just some of the significant improvements. There's many more, and I'm going to have Sergeant Alfredo Ruiz come up, and he's going to kind of talk about what the system has to offer in the future and capabilities and interfacing, and spend a couple moments talking about that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity. Just to highlight the system that the city of Santa Maria has acquired, what a tremendous acquisition this is for us in public safety. Not only does Santa Maria have it, but just to put it in perspective, Los Angeles Police Department just went live on a similar system about a month ago. Riverside PD has the same system, the Oakland Police Department, Miami PD, Las Vegas, and New Orleans. So we are now in the map with these technologies moving forward. It's exciting for me, being part of the management team, if you will, on the CAD RMS project over the past three years. It was a humbling and learning experience. Nevertheless, we have fabulous employees that work for the city, from information technology to members of the police department and the fire department, that were able to configure and basically build this system from the ground up for public safety. I'm excited because we are now looking into different modules, like Jeff was explaining. The e-citation module is something that we're going to be exploring. This is going to give the ability for our patrol officers to write citations on a tablet or cellphone, whatever device is recommended by information technology, and digitally send that information directly into records within a matter of seconds after the citation is being issued. Traffic collisions, it's a big thing. When our citizens are involved in a traffic collision, they typically have to wait a significant amount of time before that report is processed through the system. With this e-citation module, the officers will be doing their citation, or the traffic collisions on the citation module themselves, and that report will then be made readily available to the citizens within a matter of days, as opposed to weeks, that we now currently experience. Other solutions that we're going to be looking into is the Aware Camera solution. It's a solution that public entities, for example, a bank located here in our city, can acquire the camera, integrate to our CAD system, and in the future, they have a call-for-service, a robbery, for instance, the dispatcher will be able to tell immediately that that location has a camera, and how cool is this? The dispatcher can push a button and get a live feed of the incident going down. And what's even better is the officers responding to the scene can also get that same view as they set up around the perimeter and get actual live footage coming from that camera system. We're also looking into a license plate reader. This is a network system that can capture vehicle plate information when we have critical incidents. Unfortunately, we've had our sheriff homicides here in the city, and working as the detective supervisor, it's always challenging to try to get information as soon as we can to apprehend those individuals. With a solution as a license plate reader, we have taxi cabs, tow trucks, freeway cameras that integrate to our system that can give us real-life information as a vehicle's traveling down Highway 101 towards Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, or wherever, so that we can capture that individual quicker. We're also looking at online reporting. We have numerous calls for service. The city of Santa Maria is a very busy city. We average about 300 to 400 calls per day here in our city, and a lot of those are very low-crime incidents. For instance, somebody losing their social security number, or somebody scratching their car, and they're reporting that for insurance purposes. Now, if we obtain this online reporting solution, the citizens will have the opportunity to write those reports online, submit it to the police department, and not have to wait for 45 minutes, 30 minutes, before an officer is clear from another priority call to be able to attend to their problem. To the citizen, that situation is very important. The police department realizes that, and we want to improve our customer service for our citizens. So again, Mayor, Council, thank you for this integration of Premier One. Like I said, it's been a very challenging three years for all the individuals involved with this solution. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Lieutenant Paul Van Meel, our record supervisor, Marie Sarri, dispatcher Laura Brennan, and Michael Belcorta, Officer Andres Lopez, Amanda Ricker, Julia Tatarian, Tiffany Delaney, Joshua Yee, members of the fire department, Jim Clayton, and information technology, Mike Davis, James Oswald, Mike Habakurn, Bert Ribbit, Michelle Heath, Dot Robbins, Tomas Orozco, and of course, Jeff Morisick. They did an outstanding job putting this together, and it was definitely a pleasure and an honor being able to be part of this solution moving forward. What a great acquisition, not only for public safety, but for the citizens of Santa Maria. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think what you're hearing is, thanks, Alfredo. So we're proud of this. We're proud of this system. We're proud to be able to complete it, and we're proud of the staff who worked hard to be able to make this happen. We are very thankful for the community to be able to support this level of service, and we're excited to be able to provide this service going forward to the community. And that completes our presentation.
Thank you. I know that, and I think Sergeant Ruiz went with, I don't, I don't know how many people, I think there's sort of three or four of them, to pick out the kind of system that we were going to be using, and so, because they had a lot of input into it. And I'm just, I'm so proud of our police and fire department that we have this and we're able to use it. I know one time, I was going up, up north, and San Francisco had purchased another system different than ours, and it was more expensive, and that thing kept failing and failing constantly up there. So they were having to go back to use the, the radio phones in their cars. So thank you very much. Any comments? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, this particular program is, is obviously light-years ahead of where I came from when I was at the police department. Although we started hearing about MDCs and records management Although we started hearing about MDCs and records management systems and things like that back in the 90s, we never really got a system even remotely this sophisticated. And I can't help but giving a short history lesson here on how far we've come. Back in the 50s and mid 60s, they had a position here at the Santa Maria Police Department called the alley position. And what they did was they assigned an officer after a certain period of time at night to walk all of the alleys in the downtown area. Whoever the officer was would, you know, shake doors and run people out of the alleys and just kind of, kind of didn't allow people to lurk in the alleys where crime could, could take place. And the police department, of course, was located right across the street here at 222 East Cook Street. If you look at old pictures, like the ones that are in, in the office, city manager office, there was a light that extended from the southwest corner building at Main and Broadway, and that light was out at an angle right toward the center of the intersection, and it was red. And when the, this is how far we've come. When, when the officer in the, working in the station late at night needed help, for whatever reason, or a break, for whatever reason, he would go over to a switch and turn the switch on, and that light would go on at Main and Broadway, and the alley officer would see it and either respond with a phone call, or respond back to the police department to see what, what the emergency was. That's a little different than the management system that we have today. That very light can be seen at the museum next to the chambers office. Many years ago, when the lot of remodeling was going on, some young aggressive patrol officers appropriated that light and made it a gift to retiring Chief Elmer Reynolds. And that actual light is present and a part of our history here in Santa Maria. But it's just such a welcome opportunity to see this come to our community that puts us way ahead of, of other departments. And there was something said way back when I was a young person in the police department, says you can outrun the police, but you can't outrun Motorola. So, so this is even speeding Motorola up even more, and thank you guys for all your efforts. I think we're going to do a better job and maybe save some lives with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. What other modules are we considering of also adding to this program?
I think Sergeant Ruiz touched on a few of them, so, and there's a number of them we can, and we're evaluating a lot of them, but the immediate, the immediate ones we're looking at is the e-citations, to be able to provide electronic citations in field. There's some upgrades to records enhancement and transcribing that we can do. And then for fire, the immediate ass project we're undertaking now is the locution, which Jeff and Chief Champion touched on, but that's, you know, a really neat system that ties into this dispatching and alerts the fire station, but also turns the lights on and turns the gas oven off and, you know, makes the station safe so when they can leave quickly and not have to worry about, you know, the things they left behind. So there's a number of things we can add to it, and then the other part of it is enhancing the radio system, make sure that we can communicate with interoperability with other agencies that don't have this level of technology.
Does it also like archive those communications via radio?
Yeah, we'll be able to, well, we, yeah, the 911 calls we are cut for sure, yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda will be the public comment period. Madam Kirk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public.
I have a request to speak on the issue of this presentation. If I'm allowed to speak.
Sure.
It wasn't on the agenda, so I took a chance. All I make a request of, from the police department, city manager, the police department's boss, is that we have some citizen oversight, or citizen participation to ensure that this system is not abused. See, once you put the license plates and all these, where the police department has direct access with a push of a button or a camera, we have to make sure we have some citizen oversight to make sure that we have officers or those that are abusing the system. I think that's a fair and reasonable request. Second, I think a striker or a police department representative here, how does this system assist those officers when they're having contact with public citizens? See, currently, right now, if, when the officer and the citizen are together, we have no video. I don't know if we're recording the audio, but if the system is not, I mean, we can have all the interaction and all the system you want, Mrs. Soto, but if, there has to be some kind of video, this system, all the money that's put into it, there should be some kind of way where we're actually, where the officer has the camera, we can see it in live action as a push of a button, where the top brass, the police department, will see how the officers are acting and conducting themselves. Second is that, what's the, I mean, the presentation was here, but I'm hoping that soon, sooner or later, the city manager will bring a presentation of what's the cost, annual cost, to keep, the upkeep of the system. Is it going to run us all the way to the ground? We know we're in a financial crisis as it is. So I think the main point is, city manager and police department, we want some oversight participation and citizen participation to make sure that these systems are not abused and taken advantage of us taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda will be public comment portion, and if you could please read the criteria for the public comment.
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public. Some agenda items, close session items are matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Directions may be given, however state law does not allow action to be taken by the city council on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak. Form can be opened. Request to speak.
Nine on, on public comment? Okay. Thank you. Sarah McDonald, followed by Ernest Armenta, followed by Gregorio Lopez, followed by Gary
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members and staff. I'm Sarah McDonald. I am representing the League of Women Voters as the Director of the Observer Car, and I'm here to observe your meeting.
Thank you. Ernest Armenta, followed by Gregorio Lopez.
Ernest Armenta, city of Santa Maria. I will be in opposition to the city's findings of a item 3E. This was the type 21 of sale of alcohol beverage license for Alvin Market at 401 West Alvin Avenue. I think we ought to be fair and equal. This, this, this due to some historic, I think, we, the city right now says that no fueling station can sell alcohol off the freeway, right? That's been a long practice here. But this, this city council, all five of you have agreed that that was, that we had made an exception for Costco. Costco's the only fueling station along the 101 freeway that's allowed to sell alcohol and spirits and fill up your tank. Now, you may say, what does this have to do with Alvin? I think it should be fair across the board. It's very simple. This city council said that nobody can get off the freeway, fill up their tank, buy some vodka and tequila and a bunch of cases of beer, get right back on the freeway and drink and drive. We said it was a safety issue, but you five made an exception. So I say this, hey, this be fair and equal. We have a small business owner here that says they want a certain type of license. There's a, I guess, the city attorney or the city staff made a finding that, no, you should, you cannot. So I say this be fair and equal, and I'd be opposing, I don't know who was, one, one question of Mr., maybe you don't have to answer. I assume that was the city attorney that made this finding. And if that's true, that the city attorney or city staff made the finding, then I say that maybe the only way to change this is we have an, an elected city attorney. So if we disapprove of him, vote him out. Next, I will talk about 3C surplus property for Long Pope. I'll make it very simple. The city comes, people, when we have surplus property, the practice of this city is to send up all the, a lot of these items outside. Police vehicles, surplus property, I always went to LA to auctions out there. I say give the citizens of this community and the auction companies here in this city first shot at all surplus property. Thank you very much.
Gregorio Lopez, followed by Gary Hall, followed by Eileen Insineas.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and fellow citizens. I'm a recruiter with the U.S. Census Bureau, and I'm just here to advertise that we're looking for people to work for the Census Bureau. Myself and my partners, I hear, and Kita Cassiap, are the two representatives for Santa Maria right now. So we're looking for people to apply for the Census Bureau. We have positions that are going to be lasting through the summer. The pay is $20 to $22 an hour plus 58 cents per mile. To apply, you simply go online to 2020census.gov/jobs. And for those of you that would like, I have little business cards, and for those of you that have businesses and would be willing to post the information in your business, I have some folders. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Gary Hall, followed by Eileen Armijo Insineas, followed by Esther Jensen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name is Gary Hall, and I live at Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue. Thank you again for your service. Upon observing you during these meetings over the last year, I have developed a sincere appreciation for your dedication. I don't agree with everything you say and decide, but I respect it. I really do not agree with the decision made two weeks ago regarding the model lease. Being excluded from the deliberation was extremely disappointing since a lot of what was stated was at best inaccurate and misleading. Approving the model lease and enforcement agreement as was submitted to you by the city staff was a huge blow to the seniors and low-income individuals who live in mobile homes in Santa Maria. Your intention to provide relief was never questioned. Thinking a formal, yet voluntary, and still not fully enforceable model lease that is filled with provisions that favor park owners will somehow meet our stated and restated goals defies my imagination. As I stated on November 19th, over the past 13 months, and given the current lack of progress, one fact has become abundantly clear. True and complete rent stabilization for all mobile homeowners will only be realized when the city of Santa Maria adopts a rent stabilization ordinance. Please help us find a way to get the draft rent stabilization ordinance that was handed to you on October 15th on the city council agenda and adopted by, let's say, spring 2020. The provisions of that adopted ordinance will satisfy our goals. We will be contacting you soon in hopes of developing an adoption and implementation plan. Good news, I won't be here in two weeks. I won't be standing here in two weeks. Happy holidays to all you and the city staff, and to all your families. Let there be peace on earth, goodwill toward men, and especially in Santa Maria. Thank you.
Eileen Insineas, followed by, followed by Esther Jensen.
I'm a little shorter. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. My name's Eileen Insineas from La Maria Nesbit. I am new to the process of city government here in Santa Maria, as I've retired from corporate America in the LA area. I had hoped to see a fair and equal process from both sides in dealing with rent stabilization here in Santa Maria. Instead, I saw a long and drawn-out process that took way too long and caused many homeowners that could not wait any longer to sign current leases. And what I found out in all this is that there's an inequality of power between park owners and homeowners that exists due to the captive nature of mobile home park tenancies. The unequal balance of powder has, power has been recognized by the courts in statements such as, unlike the usual tenant, the mobile home park owner, the mobile homeowner generally makes a substantial investment in the home, typically a greater investment in his or her space than the mobile home park owner. The immo, immovably of the mobile home, the investment of the mobile homeowner, and the restrictions on mobile home spaces has sometimes led to what has been perceived as an economic imbalance of power in favorable, in favor of the mobile home park owner. All the cities and counties around Santa Maria have rent stabilization ordinances that will protect the homeowners from unfair rent increases while allowing the local, local park owners a fair return on their investments. There are about 110 cities and counties in California that have some type of rent stabilization, but not in Santa Maria. The enforceable model lease believed by staff to be a fair compromise contains provisions not agreed upon by the homeowners. Concessions imposed on the homeowners greatly exceeded those imposed on the park owners. We continue to ask the city council to recognize this imbalance of power between the, the park owners and the homeowners, and adopt a meaningful rent stabilization that is enforceable beyond the terms of the recently adopted voluntary enforcement agreement that allows a park owner to opt out of prior negotiations of these lease renewals. Please consider the rent stabilization ordinance submitted on 10/15 so that we are not in the same place 10 years from now. I want to thank council members Soto and Cordero for supporting us, and a special thanks to Gary Hall for all his hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Jensen, followed by Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Youth Action Group.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, council members, city officials. I'm Esther Jensen from La Maria and Nesbit. I've been coming to the city council meetings since last fall, asking the council to consider offering us who live in mobile homes the protection of enforceable rent stabilization. I cannot understand why other cities and counties around us have such protection, and yet after all this, we still do not. Instead, as I understand it, a resolution was approved asking park owners to volunteer to participate in exchange for the city not introducing rent stabilization. Will the city be involved in any way to protect the residents of Santa Maria? I want to thank council members Soto and Cordero for standing up to support us. You listened and understood us. Thank you.
Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Youth Action Group, followed by Bruce Evans.
My name is Adiel Jose Camarena.
And my name is Alexa Camarena.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Lilia Salinas, and I'm an eighth grader in El Comien Junior High School. We would like to thank you for bringing attention to the vaping epidemic in Santa Maria. We want to remind you how important the tobacco retail license and flavor ban is for our community. By changing youth's access to these products, you are taking a stand against big tobacco and protecting the Santa Maria youth from the dangers of nicotine addiction. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Bruce Evans, followed, followed by Esam Alst.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Evans. My name is Bruce Evans. I'm here tonight on item 3E. Isam is here, the owner of Alvin's Market. I've driven three hours to be here tonight, and Isam would like an opportunity to address you as well. We don't have a long presentation, but this is very important to the business, and we would respectfully request that this item be pulled from consent and put on the regular agenda, if the council would consider that. Additionally, we did provide some written materials, which I believe have been provided to you, but if you haven't had a chance to read them, I have extra copies as well.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor, I've, I've read the documents that he said, and for the sake of his request, I'd be glad to pull the item so that it can be heard separately.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
We can do that. Okay. Okay. So before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, do you wish to make any comments?
Not at this point, Madam Mayor, but if Mr. Evans and the other public comment person, Mr. Alst, are, want to speak on that item, I'd suggest the council, we can pull that item, and we can have a staff report by Community Development Director Ing, if that's the interest of the council for item 3E.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we can turn it over to Director Ing for the staff report, and then we can have council questions of Director Ing or staff, and then have the public comment and return for council deliberation.
Okay, so, Mr. Watson, just do I do the, the rest of the consent calendar first then?
Just for efficiency, that might be the best.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar omitting item 3E.
E.
3E, that's what I said.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent item with the exception of 3E. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield, aye. Councilmember Cordero, aye. Councilmember Moats, aye. Councilmember Soto, aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to 3E. And then, Mr. Ing, you're going to give the staff report on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Alvin Market is requesting for a Type 21 alcohol license in lieu of their Type 20. The difference is, Type 20 is beer and wine, and Type 21 allows them to sell distilled spirits in addition to beer and wine. Alvin Market is located at 401 West Alvin Avenue. That's the corner of Thornburg and Alvin. And the council has an ability to make a finding of public convenience and necessity. However, government code requires us to consider two, two issues here, whether there's an over-concentration of ABC license within the census tract. And currently, there are six licenses, and this doesn't add to the number of ABC licenses for the area, but staff feels that going from a Type 20 to a Type 21 would be an intensification of the use. The other consideration is whether there is a undue concentration of crime in the area. And for this reporting district, there is an undue concentration. There is, there are 93 reported crimes in 2018 compared to the average of 69. So due to those reasons, staff could not provide a recommendation for the council to make a finding of public convenience and necessity. That's a primary reason. The secondary reasons are that this location is in close proximity to Robert Bruce Elementary, El Comino Junior High, and Four Square Church. So with those considerations, staff felt, could, could not recommend to the council to adopt the PCN. This concludes staff's report, and I invite any questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Ing? No? Okay, Mr. Evans?
Thank you again for pulling the item. If it's okay, I'm going to have Isam, the owner, go first.
Sure.
He's shy, but it's his business, and I, I think it's important that you hear from him initially.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Isam Alst. I've been here for 14 years, and I am the owner of Alvin Market. I take care of my store very well. I support the school and all the neighborhood. It's neighborhood store. I've been selling beer and wine for, actually, 40 years that location been there. And I come here to ask for help to update my license from 20 to 21. And I feel it's going to be not hurt anybody, or because all the liquor, it's going to be behind the counter, and nobody can touch the alcohol only if someone want to buy it. And that's, you know, I feel like it's going to be helpful for all my neighbor to not go far if they need buy hard liquor. And I will keep all my business same the way how I take care of my customers, support the school, the church. And I, actually, I went to the district office to talk to the school about it, and they know how, how I am nice, and the location never had any problem for last 10 years, never sell to minor or any drunk people. So they say nothing problem to the school because you already been selling beer and wine. And same thing with the church. When I went there, they was happy, they have no problem because this location been over 40 years there. And I come here just to ask for help, and I like to have alcohol in my store, liquor, because already I'm selling beer and wine. And I work hard. I work 40 hours in that store. I have only that store. I have big family, helping all families, and I need your help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
I told you he was shy. Isam has a hard time talking about himself, but he, he clearly must be doing something right at that location because he has a relationship with the school district. He, he knows those schools. He regularly supports those schools. Those kids are in his store. The only thing that's going to change in this request is he's going to have a small amount of distilled spirits behind, behind the cashier counter. That sign says food store, it's going to stay a food store. I say he's clearly doing something right because the police department reviewed this request, and detailed criteria prompted by the planning department, and, and their response was, was very clear that they had, quote, "no concerns" about this request. So we provided contact information for the school district that he saw, that Isam spoke to, for the city to verify that the school districts were not opposed to this request. We provided contact information for the Four Square Church that Isam spoke to. They could confirm that they're not opposed to this request. And clearly, the sale of alcohol is a privilege. We are not naive about the potential nuisance impacts from the sale of alcohol. But he's not going anywhere. That's his store. That store is his life, and he has run it in such a way that he has no opposition from the police department, no opposition from those schools, no opposition from those churches, no opposition from the neighbors who he also spoke to. So I would submit to you that this is a business that, that needs help. This is a minor change, and there's clear reasons for a finding of public convenience or necessity in this case because, as we provided the mapping on the actual information of what the ABC licenses are in the census tract, and his location is unique. If you go to that location, it's not a liquor store, it's not a convenience store. It's a small neighborhood grocery store. He has a little bit of everything that you would want to buy, from a non-foods aisle to food, to candles, to baby supplies, and he just wants to increase the offering at that store a little bit by adding distilled spirits to the product mix. That's all this is, and again, behind the counter. I also want to point out, he's only open until 10 o'clock at night. He's not a traditional liquor store selling booze until 2:00 a.m. He serves that neighborhood, and I think he's done a good job. And again, we, we ask for your support. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Soto?
Can you, what are distilled?
Distilled spirits is, is, is hard alcohol. So that would be whiskey or scotch or...
And that's all he's wanting to sell?
Well, he, he, he has a beer and wine license now. So there's a state law requirement that when there's a change in license, that there is a, there is a, under certain circumstances that the planning director spoke to, there is a requirement that that business come to the local jurisdiction and obtain a finding of public convenience or necessity. Now, you're never going to be able to show necessity for alcohol, so I don't know why the legislature put that in there, but, but we're submitting that there's a public convenience by the change in license type. So we're not adding a license, we're just exchanging a license, and the difference would be, is that he would add some shelving of distilled spirits behind the cashier counter. So that's, that's what he's requesting, but it requires a license change, which requires us to come before you tonight and request this finding that would then be submitted to the CDC. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I'm, I'm looking at his application to the city of Santa Maria and his reasoning for wanting to, to do this. You said he's open until 10 o'clock. He's actually open until 11:00 p.m. So from 6:00 till 11:00 p.m.
Right. In the winter time, he's cut back his hours till 10.
Okay. Okay, and, but I can understand the monetary part of it would really up his sales in regards to that. Has there ever been any robberies at this store at all? None at all? And you, you say you have three employees at the, at the store, customer service and cashiers. Is that during all the hours that you're open?
Yes.
Okay, so you do have enough employees in there.
All the time. I've been there for 10 years. I never sell to any minor, any drunk people. I know my customer for like 13 years, actually, because it's neighborhood store, and it's just, you know, helping all the, the customer, all the neighbor. I like to, always the customer happy, all the neighbor happy, that's the school. So it's going to be not a big change for me to just add behind the counter some kind of alcohol.
So it will, it will be behind the counter then?
Yes.
I'm looking at your diagram and trying to follow where it's...
And nobody can touch alcohol because it's going to be only behind the counter, only the guy who over 21 and he want to buy it. That's...
And you spoke to the Four Square Church, and they were...
Yes.
They were not opposed to that at all?
Yes.
And I saw the other, I, I did see the correspondence with the police officers, and he did not see with Matt Jensen, and he did not see any issue?
Yes, and I, I went to the police department, and they told me it's nothing problem, therefore, we never have any problem in that location. So they okayed, and I went to the school and the script, district office, and same thing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do, Madam Mayor. I have questions for staff.
Go ahead.
How many of these type of licenses do we have out in neighborhood markets in the city of Santa Maria?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Soto, I do not have that information readily available at the moment.
No worries. To our police department, how many incidences, how many reports would you say that you got from that part of town? And I'm sorry for, for not asking, for not sending you these questions beforehand. They just popped into my head right now.
I, I don't know offhand. I would have to go back to the information provided by Community Development on the, the number of calls for service they had during that timeframe. I don't know what type of calls they were, and I'm not aware of anything other than what's been discussed in either emails or open discussion here.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
Mr. Ing, the store, the, the market at Elizabeth and Boone, is that a 20, a license 21 there? Do you know?
Councilwoman Waterfield, again, I do not remember offhand whether it's a 20 or 21.
I think it is. I think it is a 21.
I think it is a 21 because it has a big liquor sign up there. I think that, I think the problem is, or the issue or the concern is that it's near a school and a church. But providing the documentation that, you know, they, they don't have a problem with it, I, I would leave it to the rest of the council to decide, you know, what to do on that one.
Dr. Moats?
I just had a question for Mr. Ing. Maybe it was a year or two years ago, we had a case in front of the city council of a gas station that was right across from Pacific Christian Academy, and they wanted to perhaps sell beer and wine. And that was refused because they were across the street from a church and a school. And they had a very convincing presentation by their pastor and a large presence in the audience to back them up, and we all agreed then that Chevron wasn't going to get that permit. How does that differ from this case?
Dr. Moats, so for that particular request, it also triggered a conditional use permit, which went before the planning commission. And with a conditional use permit, a 300-foot mailer was sent out to the adjacent neighbors. So the neighbors were kind of put on alert. For this particular item, it, it didn't trigger a conditional use permit, so there were no postcards sent out to the immediate area, but this simply required a finding by the city council for public convenience or necessity. So that, that is one difference. It just didn't have planning commission review.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In response to Dr. Moats' question, I commented on that issue regarding the Chevron station. And another matter that was mentioned there was its proximity to the freeway. And I commented on that issue itself, that, that stopping, get gas, and say, well, as long as we're here, we're heading down to the ballgame, let's get a couple of six-packs, and we'll drink them on the way down to the ballgame. Or those kinds of things. So the proximity to the freeway had something to do with it as well. Regarding this particular facility, just for a point of clarification, Mayor, and I may be wrong on this, I don't ever remember being questioned with regard to comparison of Costco Market. I want to assume that that conversation regarding Costco took place before I returned to the council. However, Mr. Armenta is not wrong very often, so I would be interested to see whether or not my name is on anything where, where that comparison can be made. And secondly, it, it appears to me that, that there's not going to be any more or less spirits sold because of this particular facility. I, I tend to agree with the owner and, and his attorney that I, you know, I'm there buying the, the bread and eggs and things like that, and I remember that my relative is coming over, and, and he enjoys a highball, so I'm going to get a bottle of something to, to socialize with or something like that. I, I just, I have a hard time thinking that we're going to have a party and load up on something, so let's go down to the market and the 400 block of West Alvin and load up the trunk. I just, it doesn't strike me that that's going to happen. And with the communications, as Councilwoman Waterfield mentioned, it seems like any concerns that we might have had have been mitigated before we even got here, meaning the school district and the, and the church. The other part of, the other side of the fence for me is that if he's been doing so well, why does he need to sell spirits? I mean, if he's doing that well with it, then how much more money is he going to make with spirits? And I have a personal aversion to it because the additional exposure that we give to our young people is just that exposure. It's not, it's not really unlike a couple of weeks ago when we were discussing the vaping and stuff. It's just there for these kids to see. And, and then ultimately, it, it goes from seeing it to, well, it's always been in my life, I can just buy it now, I'm 21 or close to 21, and I can sneak in there and get it. But it, I tend to not really want to increase these numbers of places that can sell hard liquor to, to people that is going to increase the exposure to our young people. Having said that, I, I don't think I can find it within myself to, to vote against this gentleman, based on all of the homework that he's done and the feedback we've gotten from our police department, and assuming that everything is true that he got back from the alcoholic beverage control. That's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, so are we now in the comment section? Comment portion, are we done with questions? I just get confused sometimes with, with the order.
Yeah.
Are we done with questions now?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, oh, so comments. Okay, so my turn? Oh, oh, so comments, okay, so my turn. Well, I actually used to live in that neighborhood, actually, in the northwest side of town, and I attended Robert Bruce Elementary School. And so, every morning, my mom would walk me and my little brother to Robert Bruce and we would always pass by that market. And on the way home, and once I got a little bit older and I was able to walk on my own, I would stop in a market and, you know, get snacks, candy, whatnot, you know. And thinking back, you know, alcohol was in front of me, you know. And it's so interesting to me, just as, you know, as this came before us, just think and just hearing at the comments and the remarks, that unfortunately, a lot of these neighborhood markets that sell alcohol are usually in poor neighborhoods, in the neighborhoods where there's a lot of minority communities living in them. And so, when I think about, you know, after hearing the staff's report and the high crime rate and, you know, also thinking about the correlation with alcohol, you know, when people are intoxicated, whether it's alcohol or any other substance, you know, it's, they may not be in control. And there may be, there very well could be an increase of violence in those neighborhoods. So, it correlates, right? You know, there's more alcohol in these neighborhoods, there's more violence in these neighborhoods. And so, you know, as someone who lived in that neighborhood and as someone who just heard the statistics of like the crime rate in that area, I think it's our duty to really take a step back and do everything that we can to protect families, protect children. And, you know, I see here that, yes, the school district didn't oppose to it, that the church didn't, but I don't want to, I don't want there to be an incident when they do come to us saying, you know what, we need to stop the sale of alcohol in these neighborhoods because of this incident that just occurred. We have to be proactive and rather than just waiting for something to come up. And so, as someone who lived in that neighborhood, who was actually in that market, I think, you know, those markets should be neighborhood markets where people can go and pick up, you know, milk and tortillas and instead of having to walk in and as a five-year-old seeing all of these, all this booze and ads of literally women being objectified with alcohol. So, that's my two cents, and so for that reason, I can't support it.
Yeah, Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I just had an observation in terms of the alcohol being displayed so children would see it. This is gonna be behind the counter, and so it won't be displayed, will it?
I'll see it behind the counter.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more question for you, Mr. Ing. How many, did you say, police incidents there were in that area?
Councilman Cordero, so this is for Crime Reporting District 15. In 2018, it was 93 reported crimes compared to the average rate of 69.
Okay. Of that 93, do we have any data that indicates that the store itself was directly or indirectly involved in any of those 93 cases?
I do not have that information.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
Yeah, I guess what we needed to decide as a council, and the question that Councilmember Moats presented was the Chevron, and it was the CUP that did trigger. And that's what triggered everybody to come in and voice their opinion in support or in opposition of this particular gas station selling alcohol. We don't have the opportunity to do a CUP because it's not triggered, so we can't make something up that says, okay, you have to go back and do a CUP to see what comes up. So, this is our decision to make in regards to what's best for that entire neighborhood. And Mr. Alst, you're just a great man that has done wonderful things for that community. And the reason I asked the questions to you of, you know, why do you want to do the hard alcohol when you've got the beer and wine and things like that? So, it's gonna be up to us to decide what we want to do as a responsibility for a neighborhood. I know there are other markets that do sell liquor, but that isn't in front of us. It's this one that is in front of us, so we just have to make them.
Just a quick question. Are we gonna make a decision on this tonight, or are we just talking in preparation for it being agendized for another meeting? We're not gonna decide this tonight, are we?
Yes, yes.
The council proposes a motion, the motion may either be to approve staff's recommendation or deny the permit or to approve the permit.
So, we decide tonight?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And so, it just got pulled from the consent calendar so that we could, and a request was made to discuss it. So, anyway, I'm ready for a motion, one way or the other.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the recommendation of staff, adopt a resolution declining a determination of public convenience or necessity for the issuance of a Type 21 Off-Sell General Alcohol Beverage License for Alvin Market at 401 West Alvin Avenue.
Okay. Yes, that's to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can I have a clarification? I thought if this is a decline, then we're denying the alcohol, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
We're adopting the resolution that's in the, okay. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rolls?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Well...
You always do this to me.
Excuse me, I think I misread her order. She wants to, and you did too, didn't you?
I kind of thought what she meant, and so after you seconded, I needed clarification.
Okay, I need to go back and withdraw, Madam Mayor, from the second.
Okay, so we're either going to adopt the resolution...
Okay, I'm not going to adopt the resolution.
It's adopting the resolution, declining.
Correct, correct, correct. That's my error and I apologize.
Okay, that's okay.
So, what happens?
There is a motion current.
Yes.
And that should either get a vote up or down and followed by a second motion if it fails.
Okay.
The motion before council is to deny the permit, which is the recommendation of staff.
Right. And so, now that it was seconded, do we...
That, you will go through that.
Through the motion of vote.
You need to have that vote.
And he can't pull his second?
It would be cleaner to make sure we have a clear record, whether he seconded it for the purpose of argument and vote or what.
Okay, so an aye vote means that you adopt the resolution.
And deny.
And deny the permit, okay.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
No.
Councilmember Moats?
No.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll be going with the... Let's see, we, oh, we've got that. Oh, I know. I wanted to announce that December 19th, which is a Thursday, we will have, at 6:00, we will have our fourth Town Hall meeting at St. Peter's Episcopal Church, which is at 402 South Lincoln. Okay, and the next order of business is an appointment. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and give the staff report?
The city council will consider making one appointment to the County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, the request before you tonight is to make one appointment to the county library advisory committee for a term contiguous with the countywide library agreement. One new application was received from Betty Gunn, and Mayor Patino would make the nomination to be ratified by the city council.
So, thank you. I'd like to make the motion to appoint Betty Gunn to the County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Councilmember Moats?
He said aye. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a recommendation from the city council-appointed Public Art Committee to introduce an ordinance establishing a public art master plan for both public and private projects and establishing a special fund designated City Art Fund by adding Chapter 10-6 to the Santa Maria Municipal Code and disbanding the committee.
Thank you. Staff report is to be given by Recreation and Parks Director, Mr. Posada.
Madam Mayor, just by way of introduction, let me just mention that the reason this item is before the city council is because on October 3rd, 2017, the city council directed to appoint a seven-person committee to, staffed by the Recreation and Parks Department, to further analyze and refine the proposed art plan and bring the plan back to council for further consideration. And so, this item is coming back to the council per that direction in 2017. And Director Posada can update where we were with the ad hoc committee and the steps to date and options going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Stillwall. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Thank you very much for letting us bring this item back to you. Recreation Services Manager Dennis Smith, he will be joining me on the other side of the room here and going through the report. Basically, the recap that the city manager just gave was what I was gonna do, is basically remind you that this item was presented in the past. It was referred back to a committee, a committee was formed. We had some meetings and the recommendation was back. I believe the main concern was that there was a perception there was a lack of input from the community the last time this item was presented. So, we thought we would bring it back to you now, we've got that input. I want to thank Councilmember Moats for being the council representative on that committee and his work on keeping the committee moving forward. And at that time, also, City Attorney Phil Senko was working on this project with us. So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and have Mr. Smith go over the plan, what we're talking about in the staff report, and then be available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. The committee that was comprised at council's direction included Stephanie Hassett of the E&amp;M Hassett Foundation, Laura Henderson of Recreation and Parks Commission, Rebecca Carey of Recreation and Parks Commission, Tom Lopez from the Planning Commission, Craig Minus, local developer, Dr. Moats, City Council, Craig Schaefer from PCPA, Kelly White O'Neill as a planning commissioner, and Jim Sanders, another developer. This committee met four times in 2018 to discuss the art plan and the options that were made available to council to consider and revise and bring back to you today. Some of the goals that we discussed in that, in those meetings have been brought to you before. Including using public art to reinforce Santa Maria's identity, embracing public art as a citywide beautification effort, to celebrate Santa Maria's unique entries to downtown and neighborhood, employ public art to encourage a more walkable city, create a public art and private development program, support temporary artwork installations and performance-based art events in areas with strong pedestrian foot traffic, and allocate funding for public art commission and maintenance. In Santa Maria, we have public art in various locations. This would help us increase public art in public space enhancement, an environment, to create an environment to be more conducive to business development, increase property values, to grow citizen pride and a renewed sense of place, to revitalize our downtown and having art in place now in the future with potential development. We went over the public benefit to art, including the funds that it raises in our local county. It does increase our revenue by $11.7 million in local and state government revenue. Locally, on average, in Santa Barbara County, in addition to ticket prices and people being out in public, there's an increase of $21.17 per person, per event spent. What we looked at as part of the committee is the options that were created. It was originally brought to Recreation and Parks Commission at a 1% based on the valuation of a permit and has gone back and forth and is now being brought back to you at .25 or one quarter of 1% based on permit value. And you'll see some examples up here of the cost to someone who's building a residential unit, someone or adding on to a residential unit or even a commercial unit. The most recent is an October sale of a property here in Santa Maria. The building valuation was $293,990,000, which if the art fee was to be added, would raise the overall permit value by $735. As a closer example, that same property was charged $27,362 in other fees. The art fee would add an additional $735 in that city fee process, meaning it would only be .03% in addition to those fees already paid. As we met through the end of May of 2018, the committee then has decided to move forward in the request to you to have the fee be placed at one quarter of 1% on property values, on permit values of $50,000 or more with a cap of $2 million per permit.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And so, the upshot of the discussion is that, in the way the staff report is written is you look at a two-pronged approach here. One of them is, is that we're looking at the adoption of an art plan, which would then give the city the direction and policies that it needs to move forward to create an art plan. The second part is the funding component of that via the percent for the arts, and this takes the .25% to the arts. We're looking at using this on all projects that are new construction in the city. We're looking at it based on permit valuation, not on the value of the project itself, the sale, the retail sale or sales value of it. This item kind of has gone back and forth with members of the community, both the development community and the arts community. From a staff perspective, you know, our role here is to bring it to you for discussion purposes. We think that at a quarter of 1%, that the fee is a reasonable fee. It would help mitigate the impacts that new development has on the community. We have already been successful in securing public art from other funding sources over time. And there are other opportunities to be able to do that. But we do think that based on what projections we're hearing, you know, Santa Maria is gonna be growing, you know, leaps and bounds over the next few years, that it would be important to have in place a program like this so that we can make sure that there is art available in the community, throughout the community. I will equate it a little bit to the presentation that was made earlier about the police dispatch system. We bought that, it was a major investment, and it was designed to carry us into the future. That's kind of what we're presenting here. It's an opportunity for us to move into the future and to have a plan in place so that we can address the needs of the community down the road. Thank you, Mayor, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Posada? Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Mr. Posada. About how much money each year is anticipated that this might raise for the Arts Fund?
So, because it is based on permit valuation, it really does matter what's happening in the community construction-wise during that time. Mr. Ing, Community Development Director, provided some numbers of last year's construction. And I believe that, let's see if I pull those out real quick here. So, based on, through October of 2019, there's been 1,680 permits issued with a total valuation of $86 million. And again, you're gonna have to figure out here that there are some that would be exempt because they're under $50,000 and there'd be some that are exempt because they're over $400,000. But if you were to just take that number... But if you were to just take that number as a raw number, .25% of that would generate about $215,000 collectively for that year, if the fee was in place.
Mr. Posada, there's not a cap of $400,000. I thought the cap went up to $2 million.
Dr. Moats, if you don't mind, yes, the cap is at $2 million. The floor is $50,000. The numbers that we looked at in 2019, removing those permits below the $50,000 threshold and $2 million cap, we approximated $76,000 in 2019 would be raised for the Public Art Fund.
Any questions, Mr. Posada?
No, it's for Mr. Smitherman. In regards to the Public Art Master Plan, you said this was done in 2018?
The plan was, the first rough draft was created in December of 2016. I have to count backwards, 16. And went to, out to public immediately in January with a rough two-page draft and was built on and added to as the plan developed. We met with a variety of community members. We started with the arts soon after business, soon after public hearings and public meetings. We hosted a variety of different ways to get as much public input as possible.
In October 3rd, 2017, was when we heard at the City Council, and you went back to the drawing board in regards to this?
The plan itself hasn't changed. It's the ordinance that was changed to meet what the council was looking for from that special committee.
And who built the ordinance? Did your committee build the ordinance?
The ordinance was based on the plan, and it was created through the variety of public input that we received.
So when you went back in October 3rd, 2017 with the committee, did you add the developers in regards to this ordinance? The reason I ask is because your acknowledgements does not include any developers, and we specifically asked you on the October 3rd, in the minutes that I'm reading, is to create a seven-member committee to include two members from the development community. And that's what I'm wanting to know, if they had any input in this ordinance?
The ordinance itself, they did have input, and their suggestions were presented with the meeting at the special committee that Dr. Moats chaired, with the two development, two planning commissioners, two recreation parks commissioners, and two community members and myself.
Okay, and who were the developers?
There were Jim Sanders and...
Jim Sanders from Painter Realty. They were the developers of the Enos Ranch House project. And Craig Minus from the Toads Group.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions here? Okay, Madam Court, do we have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, written correspondence was received from Coastal Voices, Community Choir, and Caltrans in support of the item. The Chamber of Commerce and Urban Planning Concepts also wrote, saying that while they support an art program in the city, they do not support the proposed Public Art Master Plan as presented. And we have 15 requests to speak, 13 in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. Gail McNeely, followed by Robin Esparsa, followed by Chantel Medina.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I think we're at a point in Santa Maria where we absolutely need public art, and there isn't the money for public art in the arts community. The arts organizations do all they can to raise money to fulfill their functions, whether it's PCPA or the Arts Council, any group you can think of. So the city has a chance to step up today. I went to some of the meetings and the developers have said, and I think Dr. Moats would agree with this, that .25% is not going to keep a developer from developing a property in Santa Maria. The amount is so low at this point. It's more of a philosophical problem with some people. Should public money be spent on public art? The answer that we will give you tonight is yes, it should. I represent a group called Youth Arts Alive, and if we want to inspire our youth with art, public art is the way to go. When the kids walk by a mural by Ruben Espinoza, they're inspired. And it's our job as leaders of this city to inspire our youth. Public art created by local people in many cases. This one way that the money can be spent is to hire a professional artist to mentor young people to create murals. Can you imagine what the city might look like if there were $250,000 put into murals in a year? I think that we owe this to our children. We owe this to the people that we live next door to. It will give us great pride in our community. And if you compare us to other cities, whether it be Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, there are hundreds of cities in this state who give a percentage, in some cases 1%, in some cases 2% for public art. All we're asking as citizens, give us .25% toward public art and see what a change it will make in our community. I hope you will do that.
Thank you. Ruben Espinoza?
You said Ruben, right?
Yes.
Yes. I'm Ruben Espinoza. I'm an artist. I'm one of the artists that paints the murals here around town. That's how I make my living. Most of the time, I create murals outside of the city limits, like LA, like in Bakersfield, because they do have funds for public art. And I've worked with most developers in these, with these projects. I collaborate with the developers, see how they could get more foot traffic in their doors, in malls that are, to be honest with you, mostly the retail is going now to Amazon. And so what people and developers have told me is that they're looking for experiences to provide to their customers and guests, because in the age of selfies and the age of social media, that's what people want. They wanna like show off where they're at, and a good way to show off where you're at is to have nice backdrop, and that includes art, murals. So I've worked with many developers outside of the city limits. I wish to work with developers within the city limits if this ordinance passes, because I think with more public art, there's more foot traffic and you get more customers to spend money. I know one of the biggest hurdles developers have is, what's my ROI, my return on investment? If they don't have like something in hand right away, it kind of like escapes them. But the return on investment, for example, with the mural that I did on Main Street, Main and Smith, that's leaps and bounds in more foot traffic, because that area, a lot of kids go by, a lot of traffic stays there in that area of Santa Maria. And so the appreciation that people have in beautifying their neighborhood, so many people, from elderly folk, from kids, that wanted to pose in front of the mural and talk to me and ask me how I did this, did I get paid for this? And I told them, yes, I did. It encourages them to be creative and encourages them to take pride in their neighborhood. So, I mean, if you want a case study, look no further than on Main Street. That's all I have to say about that. Thanks.
Thank you. Chantel Medina, followed by Leo Ortega.
Good evening, Mayor Alice Patino, Santa Maria council members and Santa Maria city officials. We are Chicano Renaissance, and we are here on behalf of the local nonprofit organization Corazon de Pueblo, and we support the Public Art Act. Just a little bit of info on our organization. Chicano Renaissance is a diverse group that aspires to spread more art and music and creative events in the city. For starters, one reason that I personally support this is because Santa Maria is becoming a violent city, unfortunately, and Santa Maria has beauty, but it is getting buried under negativity in the city. For example, murals and more public art events will make the city's beauty revive. Plus, it will create inspiration and even more tourism in the city. There is so much creativity and many bright people in the city that has the power to beautify Santa Maria that is being shouted by crime, gangs, and homelessness, which is what numerous people see the city as. We want better for our future, our city and our people. We want Santa Maria to see this city as positive, and our voices must be heard.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Leo Ortega, and as a member of Chicano Renaissance, I fully support the Public Art Master, Public Art Plan. And as we know, Chicano Renaissance is made of young creators, visionaries, and artists who are looking for positive changes in Santa Maria. Art has been a huge part of our lives. Everything is art. Look at the building around you. Look at the walls. It's filled with designs and patterns. And it's very important that it all brings the beauty within ourselves and our environment. We keep building, but we are forgetting about our culture, the people, the music, the art, the images that depict us together. As young adults and young people surrounded by me, we are influenced by many artists from the Renaissance and to the modern times. Every person in this group is an artist, a creator, visionary, seeking for positive changes in the community. We seek for a better place, or as we could say, a better home, to make us feel welcome. Creating beautiful designs, murals, sculptures, public art galleries in Santa Maria will change who we are as a community. We're depicted as violent, gangs, trafficking, drug trafficking. It's what the people pay attention the most. And I feel like the art needs to be out there to change, to influence young people to become creatives. Either they could be painters or getting into the music industry. Because I personally know upcoming artists, bands from Marchand around California, they are seeking for a positive change, and they need the support from groups like Corazon de Pueblo that inspire us to become creators from, like through the art. Art is everything to us. We need to stop creating boundaries within our community. We need our community together, our people together, and it gives us hope. Art gives us a welcoming environment for the youth and for everyone in Santa Maria. And for that, I really appreciate everything that Ruben has done for the Central Coast. I go to Guadalupe a lot to do photo shoots, because I'm also a photographer, and I love the murals that he has around the city. It's very beautiful. And everyone, my family members, family members and friends love art. It's like, what would life be without art? Pointless to me if there was no art. It feels like, it brings our pride and our people together.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega.
And that's what I had to say. Sorry about that.
Sara Garcia Diaz.
Hello. My name is Sara Garcia Diaz, and I'm a creative artist. And I, first of all, I'd like to say I'm very proud of you guys and my brothers and sisters. I'm an only child, but the whole community is like my family. It's the reason why I care so much for it. I also would love to say that I love that you shared that with us, because I've also grown around album marketing and stuff, and like, I would love to say that I just, art is so amazing, it's so important, and it brings so many people together. I'm gonna just bring it like that. It brings so many people together, and it speaks about culture and everything that actually matters about bringing people together. And I feel like that's all that matters right now, because, you know, it solves violence and also is like a place, like a home, because for people that, for young, young, young people who are, rather go away of, you know, finding vices instead of different ways to be creative. They rather go to drugs and hang out with people that they're not supposed to hang out with, instead of finding adults that actually care about them growing and, you know, and living a life that is theirs instead of somebody else's. And like, I really just wanna say that art, it can help not only us as a group, but everybody in this community, because it would show our beauty as people and our beauty as a whole, as a world, you know? Like, from here, Santa Maria is gonna be like a mark on the map. It's really gonna show so many people out there in the world that we are much more than just somebody who focuses on like adults and stuff. We focus on our youth too, you know? It's more than school and more than just activities that people can afford and stuff. I know a lot of kids that rather stay inside and play games instead of going outside and discovering themselves, exploring the world, you know, being creative. And I just really wanna say that, thank you for this opportunity, you know, before I pass it on, thank you for this opportunity for letting us speak and letting us share our heart about art and all that stuff, and yeah, support art.
Thank you.
Anai Santos. Hi, my name's Anai Santos. I'm with Chicano Renaissance. Chicano Renaissance has been something that, you know, Leo brought up. When I first found out about it, I was amazed of how someone, you know, like so close to my age was able to bring a group of, you know, teens and young adults together. Yeah, I'm in favor of this proposal. Yeah, that's it. It will help our community and unite our raza, so yeah.
Thank you. Laura Henderson, followed by Craig Schaefer.
Mayor Patino. This is an obvious and easy win, in my opinion. You've heard from the community in countless public hearings. The Recreation and Parks Commission has approved this plan with the fee. The Planning Commission has approved the plan with the fee. The special committee headed by Dr. Moats has approved this plan with the fee. I appreciate the youth coming out, because really that's why I support this plan and why I'm encouraging you to support it as well with the fee, because without that fee, it's a great plan that I don't think will go anywhere. One of the things that I think is most notable and really important to remember is it is a quarter of 1%. And so when we talk about those numbers, when we really look at what that means at the end of the day, the cap on a $2 million project is $5,000. And we had a developer on that special committee that said, this will not prevent projects from coming forward. So that fear of, we're not gonna be building in Santa Maria anymore, this is gonna prevent development, it's not out there. The developers have said, no, it's not gonna prevent things from happening. So I encourage you to listen to the community, to listen to your commissions, and listen to the youth, because if not for them, then for who? Thank you.
Craig Schaefer, followed by Marty Bass, followed by John Hood.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Patino and council members. I could spend my three-minute allotment of time and tell you about public arts impact financially, or that it builds community pride, it brings people together, builds cultural bridges and reduces blight. Each benefit on its own worthy of adoption of this ordinance. Instead, I'd like to remind you of a city-initiated citywide survey on downtown that took place from December 2017 through January 2018, if you might recall. Let me refresh some of those findings that were relevant to this item. Asked, would your visit to downtown be more often if the streets were safer, more comfortable, and attractive? Over 92% of respondents said yes. Note that two of those questions were purely aesthetic. In another question, how would you like downtown to look and feel? In three of those 10 answers, more public art, vibrant public spaces, and attractive buildings. Here's the kicker. The question simply asked, in the short term, what do you think should be the city's number one priority in downtown? The number one answer, beautify downtown. That was ahead of public That was ahead of public safety. I have to wonder why our Santa Maria leaders afraid of a beautification plan that is so easy. It's a win-win for the city. And I've heard board members tell me, we're not opposed to art, we like art, but I have to ask you emphatically, do you value art? As you've heard tonight, as presented, the threshold of this quarter percent development fee for public art is $50,000 with a $2 million cap, which translates to $5,000. So if someone builds a $10 million project, pulls a $10 million permit, it's going to cost them $5,000. It's such a small price to pay to beautify this city. And as you've heard, developer told us in the committee that I sat on, it is not going to keep them from doing business in this city. You may hear opponents say that this is an unlawful fee or an unlawful tax. It is not. Your city's attorney office has concluded the proposed in lieu fee is not an impact fee subject to AB 1600. It's in line with traditional land use regulations such as parking, lighting, landscaping and architectural amenities. And it's not a tax, according to your city attorney, and not subject to Proposition 218 requirements requiring submitting tax measures to a vote. So as a citizen of Santa Maria for 40 years, I sincerely request that you choose to transform the city from bland to dynamic, from uninspiring to vital, from lackluster to relevant. Please do what is right for the city and pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Marty Fast, followed by John Hood.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council Members. My name is Marty Fast and I'm the President of the Santa Maria Arts Council. I was raised here, attended schools here and taught art here at Hancock College for 30 years. I believe in the power of the arts to make our community stronger and that's why all of us are here from the Arts Council tonight. Think of the cities you've visited where public art thrives, cities that capture your imagination and make you want to come back. What is that intangible something that hooks us in and makes us book a hotel for a return visit? We might not be able to precisely measure imagination, but we sure can feel the results of it. One tangible we can measure are the dollars spent by locals and tourists alike that result from the benefits that public art brings to a city. What a surprise to turn a corner and discover a mural or a vibrantly decorated utility box. It makes us feel good. We smile, we look again, we take selfies and we send them to other people and those people send them to others after they visit and enjoy. More and more people come as a result. Public art is already building pride in Santa Maria by pulling people together in collaborations between the city, the college, area artists and merchants. As council members, you know that good community design doesn't magically happen. It takes effort because civic pride and community identity must be planned for and cultivated through shared vision and at reasonable cost. The ingredients are all here. Santa Maria is a lively community with diverse cultures, rich history and energetic citizens of all ages who are willingly contributing their time and energy to creating a better life here. The City Art Fund and the Art Master Plan connect effective planning with community benefit wisely and fairly. The Arts Council is here to convince you that this is a good idea and it will contribute to community vitality and the economy. The outcomes for similar sized communities across the country that have adopted ordinances like this with fair, reasonable, one-time fees have been positive for business owners and builders as well as for residents and neighborhoods. Please be bold, be forward-thinking. On behalf of the Santa Maria Arts Council and all of these wonderful young artists, we urge you to help make Santa Maria an even better place to live by passing the Art Master Plan and Ordinance.
Thank you. Marty, Marty, that was perfect timing. John Hood, followed by Darren, is it Gabler, Gabler?
Thank you for your time. John Hood from Hancock College. I'm the Chair of the Fine Arts Department. I'm also on the Board of the Arts Fund, which is a teen mentoring program. And we put together the Discovery Museum mural a few years ago with the help of 18 teens and that's been a spectacular experience. So I've, I've had a hand in being a part of public art, which I like to call community art because you know, we get the community out and we appreciate, you know, public art. One of the things, one of the observations I've had over the last few years at Hancock College is that I've concentrated on building a public art program there on the campus over the last few years. And one of the things I've noticed is the amount of people that now come out of their cubicles and their buildings at Hancock and enjoy our public art because we have so many new murals and sculptures now. And I see that happening for the community in Santa Maria. The more we have recently, the piece by Ruben Espinoza, the Wahaquin mural, that just blows me away. It's just a beautiful mural and it's bringing people out and I, and I've witnessed this at Hancock and people coming out and enjoying it and mulling about and talking about it. A lot of art can be very profound and it can be an instructional tool. So I, and I see the vitality that it brings to not only our campus, but I can see it happening here in Santa Maria. So I ask for your support in recognizing this beautiful plan that they put together and this very small percentage, this fiscal responsibility of a community that what it can bring to public art. And thank you.
Thank you. Darren Gabler, followed by Judith Chumley Cohen, followed by Lindy Hatcher.
Hi, I'm Darren. I run Gavin's Books down at Arabia. Certainly I support the arts program. I wanted to mention, I moved here about 20 years ago and my wife and I didn't know anything about the city when we came here. And the first thing we did was to go to the Historical Museum and they were closed that day because they were having a meeting. But they let us in and they gave us a tour. I got a personal tour from Mr. Chenoweth and what we noticed, as much as we didn't know about the city, as much as we liked what we saw because it was so calm, was there was a lot of beauty that we had torn down or plastered over, a lot of times in the interest of economy. I think it's just time that we add a bit of beauty back in. And I'd also like to add to that, the literary arts, being in a bookstore, we handle a lot of books from local authors. We have a lot of signings and poetry readings and there's a lot of good writers here. And if looking at art is to inspire, what could be more inspiring than well-spoken or well-written word? And I would hope for that committee of moving forward, that the literary arts would be a part of that new program. It's kind of cliche to say, but I'll say it anyway, that great cultures always have great public art. Thank you.
Thank you. Judith Chumley Cohen, followed by Lindy Hatcher.
I support public art, absolutely. My name is Judith Chumley Cohen and thank you so much for having this hearing, Council Mayor and Council People. It's, it's more than I hoped for in like what, 45? I'm a newbie. I came in 1975. Thank God for Shirley Contreras, a writer of great, great strength. She's making me a pioneer. I support public art, but I support more than what you are asking for tonight. I support the literary arts as well. Santa Maria has a wealth of writers. We have every genre in this town. We have some famous people way out there who have been published. We have a US poet, poet laureate who was inspired by his migrant work in the fields around Santa Maria. We have Wendellin Van Dranen, international now, inspired by her work in the Santa Maria public schools. All right. I'm here for the rest of us, the not-so-famous writers, the aspiring writers. And we are here in force, we live here in Santa Maria, we are inspired by Santa Maria. There are some writers in the wave, wave, thank you, thank you. We're here, we want to be a part of your public art plan. I don't expect Mr. Smith to go back to the, that man has worked and his team have worked amazingly well and for a long time. I'm just asking for consideration. Let me say that surrounding our town, the Nupomo Library offers its activity room for the California Writers Club monthly meeting. The Grover Beach Library supports and has book signings and book readings. The Laun Pope Library has funded workshops for juvenile poets and writers. They have bookshelves devoted to local writers. Our library does not have a bookshelf devoted to local writers. We are coming together in January to put together, just a bunch of us, and we would love to invite the city to come with us and talk about how we can support these local writers. Do I need to mention anything else except that how, oh, the aspiring writers in here? There are some of us who are more than aspiring. We're out there doing it, but I know that there are aspiring writers. This fence doesn't mean it. It's there. Some of our greatest literary people have been public servants. Thank you.
Lindy Hatcher, followed by Jerry Stinn, followed by Lori Tamara.
Good evening, I'm Lindy Hatcher. I'm the Executive Director of the Home Builders Association of the Central Coast. The Home Builders Association urges the Santa Maria City Council to accept the second alternative included in the staff report, to choose to adopt the art plan only and find another means of paying for art in the city other than saddled on the single backs of one industry because art is public and everyone enjoys art. The staff report proposes additional fees on building and housing development to fund art. The state of California is amid a housing and homelessness crisis. Increasing the price of housing exacerbates that in every aspect. We love art, we need more housing. We strongly encourage the city to approve processes, making housing projects go through faster and less expensive to build. The staff proposal increases costs, adds complexity running projects through an additional governing body, and that increases time on the project. Time is money to builders and developers. I need to quantify that for you. Interest on a one-month delay could mean $50,000 to a developer on a single project. Added to the 0.25%, which if you look on page two of the council agenda report, that's going to go up to 1%. So that 0.25% increase to 1% is going to take your $5,000 up to $20,000 per project, compounded with the delay expense for getting it through the additional governing body. So this new ordinance does not reflect the same ordinance approved in 2016 and 17. We ask you to vet it. It swaps the Recreation Committee for the City Council as a review body and it has some of the fees listed that were never discussed at the Recreation Committee, Planning Commission and previous City Council meetings. The Home Builders Association would like to have a seat at that table. Most importantly, the staff fees, the fees in the staff report to be paid by developers for art, art is enjoyed by everyone. We need to find another way to pay for that. That everyone should enjoy the art, everyone should help pay for the art. And there's some questions on clarifications needed. The 1/4th of percent for every building permit, the 1/4th of percent for building development costs, these are unidentified. Are they for grading, parking, landscaping and site work? Are there any similar fees in the city to set precedence for this? The draft public ordinance refers to the 1/4th percent building development cost. What will this fee be applied to? Some of the projects that the developers would pay for on their project, that art won't even go in that area that they're paying for. So thank you for hearing our concerns and we look forward to a resolution and a true partnership and working together to build more quality housing and provide art for your city. And if this is voted down, I am a nationally certified grant writer and I will help the Arts Council find grants to pay for this.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll take you up on it. Jerry Stinn.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First times I've ever been to a meeting like this and I've been, lived in Santa Maria for over 50 years, I just want to say.
You're long overdue.
Yes, I am a business owner and I guess I'm going to consider myself an artist. Now here's the funny thing though, I'm against the fee. I'm also a contractor and I'm, all the fees that are piled upon the builders and the developers, enough's enough, guys. You have to find another way. I've been doing art for over 50 years. I could show you pieces for five decades. I did my first piece of jewelry in 1974, so I've been doing it for a long time. I don't want to have to pay for something that I wanted to do. I went to the city three or four years ago to open up an art studio. I went forward and filled out the paperwork for conditional use permit. I never saw anything from it. It pushed me down a path and I wanted to do something legal so I could have an open house once a year. I wanted to have an open house to show my pieces. Nothing ever happened from that, never heard from it. I just don't believe in any more taxes. It keeps piling up and piling up and piling up. There has to be another way. And just like the previous lady just said, shouldn't be put on the backs of just one person, okay? It has to be, there has to be another way. And who's going to be running it? Who's going to be deciding what goes where, who, where, what and when? I would love to know if these people have ever made anything themselves or came up with anything. And let me tell you, I'm all for the arts. I'm all for everything arts. We're going through life as these zombies. We're not creative anymore. We stay on the phone, we stay in the video, we don't do any creativity. And I know our schools are lacking in some of the arts also. I'm not sure about Righetti, not Righetti, High School or mid-grade, but I know the schools are lacking in the arts. We need to concentrate there. I'm not against the arts. I help everybody with the arts. I wanted to open up an working artist studio, free to charge, free to artists to come in. I had the ability for 14,000 square foot art studio. Nothing ever came from it. I tried, but now since, oh, I do consider myself an artist, but I'm a mechanic by trade because I have to make a living. The artist, oh, very good, I loved your painting, but I, upon myself, I go to work with a job to make money every day. Okay, good, good. And I'm glad to hear that dude. I'm not capping on you, I'm just saying I love your work. I love creativity, but we got to find another way to, to provide for it. I'm the first one to push for it, guys. I've been around it for decades. Okay, was that my beeper?
Yes, it was. Thank you, thank you very much.
I'm all for it, but not for any more bills.
Jerry, this is the shortest, this is the first time I've ever heard you speak the shortest time.
Lori Tamara.
I'm going to have to talk.
I'm going to have to talk really fast if I'm going to get everything in, so if I can get just a little extra time, just... And hopefully you all will applaud me when you get done. So first of all, I became aware of this program, Lori Tamora, Urban Planning Concepts. I do work for developers. I became aware of this program in June of 2016. Getting ready for this meeting, I went back through my notes. I have over 200 emails to Dennis and to Alex and to Phil. Almost all of those emails were disregarded. I've provided comments, edits, changes, suggestions, offered to meet, offered to go through the documents, make suggestions, come up with ideas, ask for reports, ask for items, and they were all disregarded. And I believe it's because I represent the development community, or I'm a woman, or I'm a land planner, or I don't know why. So I just want to put that on the record. So you've got a lot of information for me, so I'm not going to go over this, but I will just point out a couple of the comments that I had. First of all, in the master plan document itself, there's two pages on page six and seven, basically going through the history of the art program, and it talks about cities like Chicago, Denver, Miami-Dade, Philadelphia, but it doesn't talk about Santa Maria or Santa Barbara County. It doesn't talk about San Luis or Ventura. It doesn't talk about our local environment and those cities and communities that we compete with. Every other time we've ever had a fee issue brought to the city of Santa Maria, we always had a comparison of what are our neighbors doing? In the three county areas, there's 17, no, there's 23 jurisdictions. There's only four that have an art program. Three of them only tax capital projects. Pismo Beach does tax other building permits, and that's the only one. So this is not something that's done everywhere. As a matter of fact, I'll go to the... So I asked Dennis, write this, write this plan that impacts Santa Maria. I don't care about what happens in the rest of the United States. So delete pages five and six, or six and seven. Next thing, there was a comment made in regards to what's happening in the state of California. I have the list from the California percent art plan. There are over 540 jurisdictions. Only 60 have art programs. Only 30 are in, 30 of them are in LA, and only five of them tax residential. Most of them are capital taxes. What are nonprofits? What about people self-help housing? Are they going to be leveraging money for this? So it's tax upon tax upon tax. Okay, so let me just...
Madam Mayor, I would like to continue. Please. Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you. Now I can breathe. After working with the city for 32 years in different projects, this is the first time that the city staff did not follow the City Council's direction to work with the development business community to bring forward a plan that everyone could support. I want to say to the community, a bad law does not make for good art. And what you have before you is two pieces of the puzzle. You have the master plan, and then you have the ordinance. The master plan, although I do not support it, if you choose to adopt it tonight, delete pages six and seven, and also delete page 12 that refers to the 1% tax. If you adopt, if you do those edits, and again, I don't agree with them, but if you want to adopt something tonight with those edits, this is tolerably acceptable. Do not pass this ordinance. This is bad law, and it needs to go back to the drawing board. And so I'm sorry that I have to be here tonight opposed to something, because I do love the arts, and I do want to compromise, and I'm just sad that I have to be here after five years of work, volunteer work.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one minute. One minute. Dr. Moats has a question for you.
Mr. Merwin, you say that only so many of them tax capital projects. Are you talking about municipal capital projects?
Correct. Those would be things like the library, the police department, fire stations. Most jurisdictions, that's, including Santa Barbara County, that's the only source of art dollars that are generated is through public projects, not leveraging, again, one industry, which is the building industry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this back to the council for discussion. Dr. Moats?
Can I just ask another question?
Sure.
We got a letter from the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, and in it, it says that the chamber believes that a program should be created possibly through contributions with an incentive-focused approach to engaging private developers. I wonder if Mr. Morris could come up and tell us what he means by that.
Yes.
What sorts of incentives should we give the developers to contribute money to the arts?
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Dr. Moats, what I would be referring to would be offers, ways that the city could encourage the developer to add the work, the art, on their own initiative. And I think there are a number of those that cost the city nothing in terms of revenue and cash, right? So, for example, in a residential project, a density bonus. So if you're building 10 units by right, and you could add 12 units, you know, in exchange for adding public art to the project, that doesn't cost the city anything. Turns out to be a win-win. And a commercial project, it could be parking requirements, right? Perhaps, you know, if you need 12 parking units, you know, you put two in, and in exchange for the other two, you know, you offer some art. So I think there are a number of tools like that that the city has in its toolbox that instead of making it a mandatory project or product, it becomes an incentivized and a voluntary one. That's what that phrase refers to. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. And one more question. Do you know anyone in the development community who supports this art project with the taxes of 1/4 of 1%?
So I don't think you'll find anybody that is just adamantly saying, no, don't do it. I think everyone agrees with the goals of adding public art to the community. It's a win for the community across the board. I think our concern is simply, you heard a comment earlier tonight that this is the easy plan, and I think that's the problem, right? The easy thing is to point at one particular slice of our community and say, you pay for it. The right solution is to figure out a mechanism that the entire community, if we all support it, and I believe we do, that the entire community helps to fund it. Let's be honest, if Mr. Smith is correct, and this generates $75,000 a year, you're not going to see any real impact in the community in a year or two years. And what you're going to have is the art community coming back and saying, we need more. And again, it's going to go back on that same funding source. If instead of the development community, this today, it said, let's tax paint to pay for the arts community, I don't think anybody would say, that makes sense. Let's do it, right? So why are we targeting one piece as opposed to a broad, community-wide funding mechanism? I think that can be done. This community supports the things it cares about. I think we could look at a number of different areas in this community where, on a regular annual basis, the community donates much more than $75,000 a year to do the things that are well-developed, well-planned for, and are supported by the community. I think art could be that same thing. I don't know that we've ever asked in a way or provided a mechanism that allows the community to really rally around this and fund it as a group. We'd love to help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
I have a question for staff.
Sure. Ms. Soto.
Can we get clarification on the way the report is being, is written on page two, Part B? Permits valued at $50,000 to $400,000, and then in Part C, it says building development costs up to $2 million?
Thank you. Yes, the fee would be actually not just on developers. It is for all residents who pull a permit. So it's for anyone in a private situation from $50,000 to $400,000, up to $2 million would pay the fee. So it's not just one agency or entity or group that would be charged this fee. It is spread across all permits.
Okay, and so I guess I'm confused with permits valued versus building development costs.
Okay, so the permit value is what is the estimated value based on the project. So when someone goes in to pull a building permit, they estimate their project value, and that's what we would be basing, the fee would be based on that number. So when you go to planning and see them at the counter there, you fill out your permit, that would be the number used to establish the fee.
But that's, so is, I guess, is that different than the development cost?
Well, so I think what those things are, are all the fees the city's currently charging for a development. So I believe the number is about $27,000 roughly. So if you wanted to develop a residence in Santa Maria, the fees the city would charge you, which includes everything from water meters down to park fees, would be $27,000. So a developer would have to add that cost to the cost of their home to get their return on investment numbers right. So in the proposed, the one that Mr. Smith has up now, the art fee would add about $735 to that $27,000 fee, that $27,000 fee that currently exists.
So it's on the permit value, not the value of the project?
Correct. So similarly, like, this is actually an example of a recent residential project. The actual unit itself sold for about $480,000 to that resident who purchased it. So that's where you kind of get the difference in the numbers.
So that would also include capital projects that the city puts forward?
Certain projects, yes. I think it specifically exempts, like, road projects, infrastructure, those major kind of projects like that.
Thank you.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Mr. Posado, we're going to be developing the landfill in two or three years. Out of Los Flores, that would be exempt?
Correct.
Okay.
What, why would that be exempt? Sorry.
Because it's a public works project, and public works projects are exempt in the ordinance.
Is there a reason for that?
Uh, yes. Just like everyone else has mentioned to you tonight, it does add cost to the project. So those are costs that, those are taxes that the taxpayers would have to bear directly, so they're not included in there.
Thank you.
And Mr. Posado, the City Arts Fund, which is going to be where all the money's deposited, I guess?
Yes.
Is that going to be a 501(c)(3)?
At this point in time, it would be held by the Finance Department, and it would be another fund similar to the General Fund or the Utility Fund or some of the other funds that we have, and it would sit there for expenditures.
But if somebody wanted to bequeath a lot of money to that fund, would they still be able to deduct from their taxes?
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe that there is a way, a mechanism, to donate to government and get that tax exemption.
Yes? Sorry.
They could?
I don't know. I'm looking at...
We don't know.
Edison's, no.
No.
It has to be donated 501(c)(3).
It has to be 501(c)(3). Are there any plans to hold, like fundraisers? I mean, like, the Orchid Children's Art Project has a huge fundraiser down in Orchid, and they raise a ton of money. And that's for arts and for Orchid and for children.
So I don't, I don't know if you got the impression, or if the impression was given, that this is the only way that the city's going to be looking at art. We have been doing art for the last 40 years that I've been in the department, and we continue to raise money to support festivals. We've commissioned art pieces for the Autumn Arts Festival, art pieces that have been done. We've brought in artists to do art seminars. We've brought in pieces of three-dimensional art into the community so that the community could experience them. So all those have been in partnership with groups like the Arts Council, and Play has also sponsored some of those. So there is already a mechanism working to bring art in. What this plan really talks about is how do we get art coming in for those future impacts of development coming down the road? That's really what this is about.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yeah. I don't think anybody here on this dais opposes art. We all love art, whether it's Western, whether it's, you know, sea life or whatever it is that we have all around the world. My concern is how we fund it. And as Sacramento goes, there's nothing free in California. They just mandate and mandate and mandate costs to developers, to everybody in the state that we don't have any control over. This particular project, we do have control over if we want to add costs to developers, to people that want to build their homes, whatever it may be. I look at nonprofits, organizations like Play. Play has done a very good job in bringing in funds to particular projects in the city. That's a nonprofit. The Santa, the Santa Maria Library has a nonprofit where people can donate to that, and the Santa Maria Police Council is a nonprofit, and people donate to that because they're for specific items. We don't charge fees to developers. We don't charge fees to any of this. It's as people want to give to what they love the most, they will do that. In 2018, we had Measure U, and we did a polling with Measure U because we wanted to find out how the residents felt about art, and that was one of the questions that came up on the Measure U polling. And art didn't even register with the voters here in the city of Santa Maria. So, you know, I, I don't want to force something on somebody if they're not going to put their effort into it. My suggestion would be is for the Arts Council to create their own 501(c), develop a board of directors, get those people within this community to donate money, and you can go ahead and have all the art you want according to the money that comes in. I know as a... No, you may not, because I am speaking, and you're done. And so, and so it...
Okay, the public comment is over, and so the council now is deliberating.
Mr. Morris, you didn't even have a...
That was because of... Okay, Craig. Public comment is over. Dr. Moats asked, Dr. Moats asked that Mr. Morris come up here, and that's why he did. Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And for these reasons that I indicated in regards that if we want to get the publics initiated in this, a 501(c)(3) is an excellent way to do this. If there's so much interest and people are willing to put their pocketbook where their mouth is, then that is the way to do it. We just heard from a businessman that does not like these fees, and he's not even in the developing part of a business, but he understands the mandates that come down through the state of, through Sacramento. So art is great, you know, put all the art you want, but you've got to find a funding source, a different funding source for it. The city can't be a funding source for every particular item that is precious to somebody because we'd have a line out the door, and we have other things that we have to consider in regards to what is best, where our money goes. And in my opinion, you know, I would, my opinion with council is if they want, if you want to adopt the plan, adopt the plan with those emissions that Ms. Tamora had added in there, but we do not create an ordinance at all whatsoever. I would recommend that they go and do their due diligence with a 501(c)(3) just as these other organizations, Play, the Library Council, and the Police Council have done to support what they want. Measure U did not, we did not see the support in Measure U, and that went out through the entire voting city.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I think when we're talking about Measure U, it's really, I find it difficult to say, you know, well, the voters don't, didn't, didn't... to say, you know, well, the voters don't, didn't, didn't say that art was something important. I mean, when you're comparing it to public safety, I mean, everybody's going to vote for public safety, let's support public safety. But, I mean, I do remember seeing an improving quality of life, and that includes, that includes the look, the feel, and the sense of community that we have. And so here we have an opportunity to really be that innovative city, you know? And I agree with Ms. Tomora, right? Like, it's, we may not have examples of what other neighboring cities may be doing, but if they're not doing it, we can be the innovators. We can be the ones who are doing this for the first time and are, and are saying publicly, you know, and are making a stance, you know? Not only do we support the arts, because as someone who, Mr. Stin, from Stin's Body Shop, Car Shop, he said, you know, that, he's right. Unfortunately, our educational school systems are not investing in the arts. But here, as a community, as a city, we have an opportunity to be able to say, we believe that this is important. And, you know, it's fascinating to me that, you know, everybody is saying, we agree that art is beautiful, we agree that art is important to our community, but when it comes down to paying for it, nobody wants to take out their pocketbooks, you know? And as I was, you know, reading, as I was studying up for this meeting and just reading what other communities have done, and just, you know, I was amazed by the benefits that all of us would be getting from public art, from, I mean, an increase in tourism, from keeping people, keeping people to living here. You know, I have so many friends and people that I know who don't feel like Santa Maria is a place for them, and here we have an opportunity to make a stance and say, you know, we want to invest in our community, we want to invest in our downtown, we believe that art is going to bring economic growth and stability, it's going to bring pride in our culture, pride in our community, pride in our city. And, you know, I think bottom line, this is, rather than seeing it as an additional cost, as another fee, we need to see it as an investment and what we're going to be getting in return. I mean, I was in New York about a year ago, and I actually walked down the High Line, which is a mile-long park that was once just abandoned railroad track, I believe. And New York decided, you know what, we need to do something with this. And they started, when they started revitalizing that park, they started with art. And now guess what? Property theirs, there, has skyrocketed. They, I mean, once that project was completed, they had over 7 million visitors come and visit just that one site. If we want to support our chamber, if we want to support our developers, if we want to support local business, if we want to support our young people, and if we, if we want to do those things, we should be investing in art. And I also agree with Ms. Tomora when she said, you know, the burden shouldn't fall on just one entity, on one group of people. You know, I honestly believe that we, as a city, should also be investing in this. Why don't we match it? Let's match, let's also have a stake in this. Because in the end, we're all going to be benefiting from this. Developers are going to see an increase in revenue on return on investment. Residents are going to feel a part of community, feel proud of where they live and where they come from, and it will also say, it will also make our neighboring cities think differently of Santa Maria. We're no longer going to be a bedroom community. We're no longer going to be, oh, let's just stop and pump gas at Costco and go for a Costco run. People are going to want to come and take selfies in our downtown.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, I was trying, I was trying to think of ways that we could take the entire burden off the development community too. And, you know, if we use city money, well, that kind of spreads it out among all the taxpayers because the city money comes, and the general fund, comes from property tax and sales tax. And granted, we have lots of other ways to spend it. But I was just thinking of what Councilwoman Soto just said about splitting things. What if we said something like, instead of charging the developers a quarter of a percent, we charge them an eighth of a percent, and then the city matched it? And then it would be a quarter percent. Would other people, would people be happy with that?
You haven't looked at the budget, have you, Dr. Moats?
I know, I know it's tight.
Not only tight, with the pensions coming down that we're going to have to address, I don't ever, ever want to see us laying off firefighters or police officers. And I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's really, really bad in the state, not just Santa Maria, the state of California.
How about, how about the LEAF Fund? That's an economic augmentation fund, which, I mean, you know, well, and then we've got the Reserve Fund too. But we'd expected the LEAF Fund to be depleted by now, and there's still some money in it.
We're actually putting money into it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, maybe that could kick in a little? It's just a thought.
You know, and I, you know, it's interesting. So as someone who's worked in the nonprofit sector her whole life, I for one know exactly how challenging it is to just, to start up a 501(c)(3). It's really challenging. It's also challenging to recruit, find board members and to fundraise. I mean, that, that's a full-time position. But aside from that, you know, one of the things that I've always said as a board member and as an employee of a nonprofit is that, look at your budget, and you'll know where your city or where that organization's priorities lie. And here we have an opportunity to say, you know what, you know what, as former, as a former county board of supervisor once said, you know, we need to invest in our human infrastructure, not just on roads, not just on housing, not, I mean, we also need to invest in our human infrastructure. And this is part of that. Let's say, here we have an opportunity to take a stance and say, you know what, we want to have a stake in this as well. And again, if developers don't want all of this entire burden to fall on them, I agree with Dr. Moats.
Madam Mayor, I disagree both with Moats and with Councilmember Soto. We're creating a precedence for any other good feeling or good type of situation for the city of Santa Maria to fund. And I agree, our budget is very tight, we can't go down this road. Our nonprofit was created, it wasn't hard to do. I've been working with nonprofits since 1990, and if there is an interest in the community of a particular nonprofit, whatever it is, you will find the board members, you will find the funding, you will find the cash incentives that can come in. We have a young lady over here that said, she'll be a grant writer, that's what she does, she's a grant writer. You've got money right there in the bank if you would go form a 501(c)(3). It is not, it is not the duty of a municipality to, to put money to a special entity. I mean, Mr. Posada just told us the reason why the landfill is omitted from this and others is because of the cost of development. It is so darn expensive. So here we are, is this an oxymoron, or what is this? That's right in front of us. So I believe we need to go and look for funding elsewhere in the, in the private sector as a 501(c)(3). It can be done, you've got a lot of people, you have a great group right in front of you. There's a gentleman that works at Allen Hancock, they have 501(c)(3)'s there, they've got foundations, there's people in there that can help you put this together. But I don't think we need to put it on the backs of those that get regulated and mandated with fees and costs all the time, and there is no end to this. This is something we can control, so.
You know, I'd like to speak on this. I think it's really, it's terrible that they have taken so much of the arts out of the schools, and I think it's really important, and I applaud all these young, these young adults for being here this evening and reminding us how important art is and how important it is in your lives, and, and keep that importance and keep that passion in your life. And I heard it from those of you that spoke. And, but, you know, we have to decide here where we spend our money in the city. This is taxpayer money. People entrust that money to us and that we will spend it in a matter that they agree with us and that is fiscally responsible. When we went out into the community to, again, to go for our Measure U, I asked, because we had already discussed the art tax, I had asked that question be put on the survey that we went out, and it did not, I don't think even register. Soccer barely registered, and you know how we need soccer fields in this community, but it did not register. We have so many great artists in our community, and thank you, Judith, for even reminding us of the literary artists we have here in our community. We have so many artists in our community that have to go out, outside of our community to even show their, whatever it is that they, if they paint, or if they make jewelry, or whatever else they do. And I just think it's unfortunate that we don't have that here in our community. And then I have to look at what we're doing about housing. The governor, the governor has put together several task forces so that we can deal with housing. And on that, part of that I'm hearing, he's wanting maybe cities to do away with their, the 1,600 fees. And I'm thinking, how are we going to manage new roads, infrastructure, all the rest of that stuff we have to manage if we have to reduce those 1,600 fees? Then, as I mentioned, we have pensions in the state of California that are really scary. And we're having to figure out, as a city, as many other cities are, how we're going to manage that. In the city of Santa Maria, when we built that new police station, and we crossed that line, it was paid for. When we did our new systems out here at the police station, it was paid for. When we did the new library and we cut that ribbon, it was paid for. And that's the way we have always done it. And because we never know what's going to happen, the state has come in and it's taken millions of dollars from the city of Santa Maria. So we sit up here and we have to balance all this out. And it's not that it's an either/or. I think this is workable, but I don't think that you can take monies from just certain sect, why don't you just take it from electricians, or just take it from plumbers, or, you know, pick another group? But, you know, and you guys have to have some skin in the game too, not just whoever. But this becomes a real balancing act, I think, of who's going to pay for this. And that's where I come down, because I have no idea, and I think the funding needs to be decided on how we're going to fund something like this, if we do something like this. But we have such a balancing act to do, and so please understand, it's not just that we don't want to fund it, it's just that I don't see how we fiscally can. And like I said, this is taxpayer money we're talking about. This is taxpayer money. And I know we're all taxpayers here.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to address Dr. Moats' issue with regard to the LEAF Funds. Historically, as you know, Mayor and others, we have not taken one-time money, which is what LEAF money is, and used it toward ongoing expenses, which I see the art program would be an ongoing expense. We're going to want to put a statue here, or a mural here, or something here, and I don't see that ever really ending. I think we'll be going on and on with that. So, and I don't think the LEAF is a good idea. With regard to the putting it on the developers, I, I don't care for that either. Not, and the gentleman, they mentioned somebody in the committee that was a developer that said, hey, this is not going to stop anything. What was his name?
Tobes.
The Tobes Group, but it was a specific person.
Mr. Payne from, sorry.
I tend to think he's probably correct. It's not going to stop any building. However, the one that I'm kind of concerned about is that, that individual that gets down to where I'm, he or she is now trying to buy a house, and they say, gee whiz, if you only had another $5,000, you could do this. And I go back to when I bought my first house, and, I mean, we hawked our lives up to our liver in order to get the money, in order to pay for the house, and it's just not that easy anymore. So I tend to agree with, with not wanting to put this on the developers. I would like to support what the other council people have said in trying to create a 503. Now, I talked to some other people that said a 503 was not a good idea, but they've tried it in other, in other cities, and it didn't work in order for art. It didn't, it didn't really come through. The only thing I would like to add to it with the 503 is that we put a cap on the time. We've had things that gone on for decades that have been on the shelf in our community, and we don't need that. Let's put a cap on it and say that if they can't develop something in six months, that we want an update from the council. We want to know what's going on and what they're working on and maybe have some input then, because if we just say, go off and do it and create a 503, we'll be here another year, two years, or three years, or something like that, and I'm not in favor of that. So I'd like to see if we, is that legal? Can we put a cap on that, city attorney?
You're not putting a cap on it, sir, you're putting a time for response back for staff.
Time response, and so.
And that's simply a report back is what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you. So we can do it. So I think in addition to the people that have said, let's try to create a 503, I agree, it's not, it's not the end of the world, we should be able to do that in a relatively short space of time, and see what we can do with some of the people that are in this room, and others, that we can reach out and grab ahold of. And doesn't mean the city can't be a part of that. I think Mr. Posada explained it quite well when he said, this is not the only way we're trying to fund this program. There are other things that we can do in order to raise funds for this. I am in total, 100% in favor of coming up with an art program, and I think, it was said earlier, that I think we all are. But how do we pay for it? And without dragging it on any longer, I think that we have to try this anyways, even if, even if it fails. If it does fail, it'll fail on its own. We won't have to say that to pull the plug, it will just fail on its own. We will not get the support that has been suggested we should, we would get if the 503 doesn't go through. But having not tried that, unless we have, have we tried that, Mr. Smith?
The Santa Maria Arts Council is a 501(c)(3) entity which encompasses many of the arts and cultural organizations here in Santa Maria.
So we already have one in play. If we could do business with them and earmark it for this, then we may even have to develop a 503.
Their main priority is scholarships for students, but it's a potential that we could work with them.
Yeah, that would be, make a component of it.
So if we could put that under that umbrella, then the 503 might already be.
501(c)(3) can.
So I don't know that that's possible, maybe some phone calls need to be made.
Maybe you can resurrect it again and have that component put into that Santa Maria Arts Council, 501(c)(3), or if something we can do with Play, if that's an option as well, to do that.
I think it's really unfortunate that we keep talking about art, the arts, as a burden, it's a cost, it's another cost, it's another burden, rather than really seeing it as a return on investment. And, you know, when I keep hearing the comment about, well, you know, we didn't hear it from the voters in the surveys, you know? We live in a community where we haven't really been exposed to art. I personally drive to LA to see art. I was just there this weekend. I would love to be able to stay here in my hometown and be able to say, I'm really proud of this beautiful, I mean, now I can say, I'm really proud of this beautiful mural, but be able to say more of that. I think, I think we're seeing this as a fee, as a burden, as, as an ongoing cost, rather than seeing it as a tax revenue that it could bring to our city. The amount of tourism that we can, that we can bring in, the amount of people, young people, that are going to want to stay, live here. people, that are going to want to stay, live here, invest here, work here, be educated here. I, I don't think we're seeing this, we're not, we're not seeing this as an investment. We are seeing this as a cost. And, you know, in the end, you know, yes, you know, roads and, and infrastructure are incredibly important to our, to a city, absolutely. But again, so is our human infrastructure. So is having pride within your community. So is, you know, I'm sure, I, I am sure that by having art near a new development, that's only going to increase the value of that property. Those developers are going to make even more money by a $5,000 investment. They, they really will.
I suspect you're probably correct. However, even, even the smartest of investors will tell you, you still need the money to invest. You have to have the money. I'd love to invest a couple of hundred thousand dollars in gold and silver, but I don't have it. And I can't invest it, so I can't make the money. So until we develop enough money to do that, and then, and then when this big ball starts rolling, I think you'll find that the developers will get on board and say, hey, look what happened to, look what, look what happened to Tobes. They invested this money and, and we started a, we started something going here, and you may very well see that. But we still have to have the startup money, the seed money, that, that allows us to make the investment. You can't just create the investment out of thin air and say, let's do it.
And you're absolutely right, but with the 501(c)(3), that's not going to stop what you just said. That funding source is not going to stop it. It's, if this is what the people want, they will put their money into this project. They, I, I see it with all of these other 501(c)(3)'s that the city has for different departments and everything. That will not stop what you just said. It will, it will, it will happen.
Unfortunately, the people who are supporting the arts, I mean, yes, there's a wide range of individuals here that are supporting the arts. But the ones who are being incredibly vocal are, are the young people. There, it's the young generation, the younger generation. I mean, everybody's vocal about art, but I mean, just being, seeing them here. Here we have an opportunity to take a stance. And as we're getting ready to update our general plan and really create a vision for our city, this is a great start in the right direction. We are able to say, we want to be innovative. We want to be hip. We want to be that town that, that attracts people to come and take those selfies. We want to be that community that, that its residents are proud to walk downtown. Have dinner, go have a, I don't know, agua fresca, la mito acana, and be able to see a beautiful piece of art. 30 years from now, when we have downtown and we have apartment buildings downtown, I would love to live there and be able to look outside my window and see art and feel, feel that, that warmth and el corazón.
But that can still happen.
And, and by us saying we're going to delay the process, by us putting the burden on the people that are right here, who are taxpayers, who are asking us, how they want their money spent, is delaying the process. A quarter of a percent is not going to stop a project. It will not halt the project. They will continue, they will build. They will make, they will have, they will have a return on investment, and I can guarantee you that it will be more than the $5,000 that they're putting down.
I don't disagree with you.
And if we, and if we don't begin investing ourselves, how can we say, we as a city are not, we believe that this is important, but we as a city are not willing to invest in it? Have, have them come up with it on their own. Have them create a 501(c)(3). If it's important to them, they should do it. It is our duty as council members to look out for the future of Santa Maria, to look out for the, for, for future revenues. And by us halting this plan, we are not doing our job.
Let me share this with you.
Mr. Cordero.
The city, the city did not invent the 503 for the police council. The city did not invent the 503 for United Way. The city didn't invent the 503 that's under, that runs under the Altrusa Club that my wife works with. The city didn't invent it for either of the other two Altrusa Clubs that are in town that the 503 runs under. So those people did it. We're not supporting that. I know that Altrusa's not getting any money from the city. So other organizations do this routinely, and it's not, they don't deserve it. It's just that, it's just that, if that's the case, then let's come together as a community, a full community. Let's not just tax one, one segment of the community. And, and I think that's the, where you and I differ, and that it's not a dead issue. This is why I ask for, what did you call I was asking for? Report back.
A cap.
Reporting back in a reasonable period of time, so that we can make sure that something, some progress is being made. The, the one that I'm referring to that took so long was over 20 years that the Union Valley Parkway was on the books. Over 20 years. And we sat there, and I sat in this chair and said, if we got to leave it on the books for 20 years, let's get it off the books. Let's vote it out or vote it in. Consequently, Union Valley Parkway is in. But, but we, we, we can't expect the city to saddle that burden, because I'll be, I'll, I'll guarantee you also, the same as you are, that next year we'll have another one come through that wants to do something else and says, you did it for the art program, so make, give us this program. Let's do a swim club, or let's do something else, or some other organization. The funds are there. If they're there, they'll come out and support it. If they're not, then it'll die on its own.
Sure, Dr. Moats.
I'd like to just look at this in economic terms. What's our return in investment? Do we think that if we have a good public art program in the city of Santa Maria, that it will enrich the city, that will increase sales tax, that it will increase the TOT tax? Will it increase those things at a rate greater than our cost to fund it? And if we think that, then maybe subsidizing public art with using city funds would be a good return on investment.
Thank you.
I completely oppose that. I, I am in line with Councilmember Cordero in his analogy of, of what we have been discussed. We've, you know, we've got to try the 501(c)(3). We've got to make sure that there is skin in the game, as the mayor had indicated. Too many organizations have gone through a door, black darkness, didn't know if their 501(c)(3) was going to be sustained, and some have done it and some have not. We've got, everybody knows lawyers, and sometimes some of those will, will do a 501(c)(3) pro bono as well. And so there are so many resources, especially within the arts community, that they can tap into those resources to make this happen. But we do have a responsibility, and our, our responsibility is a fiscal responsibility. And we have to make sure that we have money for the things that we need to make sure that our infrastructure within the city of Santa Maria comes through first. And I, you know, I do not oppose art. I love art. Walk in my house and you'll see all sorts of art in there. But I did it on my own, and I'm not asking, you know...
Well, I'd argue that you might look at art as part of infrastructure. I mean, we have beautiful parks, and that costs a lot of money to keep them beautiful. You know, we have softball diamonds and lots of things. You might consider art something in that line. And, and I'm not suggesting that we don't have a 501(c)(3) as well. I'm just looking at multiple sources of funding. Or people who just want to donate a lot of money, or maybe make a legacy when they die to the arts.
And that would be great for them to develop a 501(c)(3). That's exactly what those things are used for. But as far for taxpayer city money, I, I completely disagree with that. I mean, art, you know, art to one person may not be art to another person, you know? Art is in the eye of the beholder when they look at that. And so we just have to make sure that we don't place our money in things that, as Mr. Cordero said, somebody else next year may come in and want us to fund that too. So it's a slippery slope that we're going down, and we don't have the money to go down that slippery slope.
But investment in art might make money.
Well, then you donate.
And then when does the money come in? Mr. Cordero, what was, what would your, your suggestion be that you were talking about?
I suggest that we, I make a motion that we pass the ordinance for the art plan. That we pass the motion, we make a motion that we pass the art plan and that we do not pass the funding, and we, we ask the current board and, and maybe seek somebody with some financial experience to, to participate with us. Somebody that has a sense about them, like, who does our income, our tax, or...
Ben Diddy.
Trent Ben Diddy, one of those people that, I know that others are getting ready to wind down, maybe they can help us. We can, we can, you know, it can, it can happen, but we need to, we need to get it going. We can't hold it up anymore. I agree with Ms. Soto that we can't let it sit any longer.
So if I hear you clearly, you're just saying to approve...
Approve the plan.
...the public art plan, not the ordinance.
Public art plan. I, I don't see the same conflicts that, that Laurie sees in that, but if we need to look at that again, then maybe we can do that, or we can, can we add something to that to look at it?
Mr. Stillwell?
To clarify, as Councilmember Waterfield requested, so I, as I understood the motion, it would be to disband the committee, adopt the plan, not adopt the ordinance, and direct staff to pursue a 501(c)(3) partnership.
Well, well, staff, I don't know that we need to disband the committee. We can ask them if they want to continue to participate. If they will participate, then we've already got people in the driver's seat. You know, we've already got people that are quite aware. Wasn't Tom in there, Lopez and others, that, that it would be, it would make more sense to me to start it off with people that are already familiar with it. And we have to have a report back date, so that we get some feedback.
And staff will report back.
Staff report back, there you go.
But how are they going to change it? For a clear record, just because I haven't heard a second, but I want to make sure there's a clear record, because there was a lot of...
A lot of talk, you're right.
Mr. Cordero, is your motion to adopt the public art master plan, to reject the ordinance, and to have staff report back on the, the developments in funding public art?
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's clear.
Okay.
I will, I will second that.
Isn't my understanding that the, the art committee that was appointed by the city will be disbanded then?
That, that was, I took that out of the clarification because there was a rejection of that concept.
What's the reason for keeping them? I just want, I just wanted to know.
Reason for keeping them in there? They're already in play. They're already in play. Some of them aren't going to want to stay and say, hey, I signed on for this, this is over. And they're going to want to leave. Others might want to stay, and they're already acquainted with, with where we are, and they can pick up. And I would hope that, you know, a couple of them do, just for historical reasons, just, just for institutional knowledge.
I think there's a fundamental disagreement between, I think, what the consensus of the city council is and what the consensus of that art committee is. Because that art committee was in favor of public funding of the arts, and I get the feeling the city council is not. And so I don't see what the art committee is going to come up with that's going to make the city accept what they propose.
And you know, I, and I would, I would go with disbanding the committee at this time and then figure out who we want on that committee, because if we had people from the, the develop, we have the Builders Association not even on that committee, or, or other, not, not just them, but other people that are out in the private sector should be on that committee.
I agree with disbanding the committee.
Okay.
Do you want to amend your...
Can we just amend that then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. So your, your additional amendment would be to disband the current ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
And you second it? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Cordero. Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Moats.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
No.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers.
Okay. The next order item is a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And members of the city council, three items to report. The first one, just to reiterate what the mayor said earlier, is our next community meeting for, is in the southwest quadrant of the city on December 19th, 6 o'clock. It'll be at St. Peter's Episcopal Church at 402 South Lincoln Street. Also, I'd like to note the next meeting of the city council, December 17th. We'll have two presentations at that meeting. One is the presentation of the light sites and holiday nights, and the second is the hometown heroes. We also have two regular business items. One is the leisure needs assessment findings and action plan, and a conceptual review of the Ma'utras Project, which is just south of the library. And also, I'd like to introduce a new face behind me here. It's Elena Morello, and she's the new HR Director for the city, our Chief Human Resource Officer, and she started this weekend. We'd like to welcome her to the city as well.
Welcome. We'll start with, Ms. Soto, let's start with you, with oral reports from the council.
When did we last meet? The 19th? On November, November? Yes, November 20th, I was on a panel for the League of Women Voters in Santa Barbara. On the 21st, I jumped on a call for the County Complete Count Steering Committee, and I went to the Econ Alliance Annual Dinner that same night. And then it was Thanksgiving. And now we're here about it.
On Wednesday, November the 20th, I attended a briefing with Kevin and for SB CAG meeting the following day. I also attended a Chick-fil-A Leader Academy over at Manami Center, and that is fully funded by Chick-fil-A. And the owner, what is his name?
Joey.
Joey. He doesn't look like a Joey.
No, he doesn't.
And he gave the kids such an extraordinary biography of himself, which was amazing, with him in the Air Force and being a jet pilot and just being able to do all these great things, and told the kids this was something that they could achieve. And then he went on to own Chick-fil-A, and that was very encouraging to the kids. And I thought, you know, we've got a lot of opportunities for our young people to get involved with the private sector and learning great things. Then on Thursday, October the 21st, I attended the SB, SB CAG Board of Directors meeting. And this Measure A that you have is a pamphlet of what they have spent with the Measure A money, and they want to make sure you had that. Later that evening, I went to the Mayor Youth Task Force, and they had a Christmas dinner for the children over at Maldonado Youth Center, and that was a lot of fun. I just really had a great time visiting with, with the children over there. Then, then today I did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and, Madam Mayor, that's it.
Thank you. Dr. Moats.
I left my calendar at home, so I don't remember the exact dates, but I did the Ben Hayes Show, rehashing the last city council meeting, and I attended a meeting, I think it was Monday or Tuesday afternoon, on how the city's investing its money. And I found out a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 20th, I attended a meeting with the Santa Barbara Foundation out at their office on South Miller, and they discussed a lot of things that they're doing and asked for some input from us, from the, from the audience, on how to address some of the youth programs in our community. It was a very interesting meeting and, and learning what they did. On the 21st, I... On the 21st, I had a meeting with the United Way, and earlier that day was also involved in presenting a check to the Good Samaritan Center for $500 toward their turkey drive. And on the 25th, I attended another meeting with the United Way concerning the upcoming 2020 Elks Queen candidate that we're going to be proposing. I would like to suggest, I think you all probably got this message, if you have not attended a DARE graduation, I certainly suggest that you try to make it. It is on the 13th, December 13th. Don't go if you're a weak person, because some of those kids and their stories were real tear-jerkers. The kids are to be commended for their bravery in telling their own personal stories that sometimes include, up to and including, a death of a close family member. So the DARE program is going to be run over at the Elks, and typically it starts like at 9:00 or 10:00. So I'd like, I hope that some of you are able to attend, if you have not. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, luckily, we had Thanksgiving, so it was a short, short two weeks. On November 20th, I attended the Marion Foundation Board of Directors meeting, and November 22nd, I did the Rick Blaymeyer Show, and did the Central Coast Rescue Mission Thanksgiving banquet at the Veterans Hall. And thank you for covering me for those of you while I was gone. And any other... If not, this meeting is adjourned.